America.
The two three five like.
Which is stand.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh. Now we're moving into the school committee members and student reports. School committee chair report, I have nothing to report at this time. Resource committee.
Uh, resource, we met the, uh, this past week. Uh, we went over the grant to accept and grants to submit on tonight's agenda and some donations. Uh, Mr. Shalafu gave an explanation of the COVID nineteen grants. An update on the E-rate. Uh, technology was, uh, given by, uh, Ms. Finney. Uh, and, um, we're going to be doing an increase in the substitute pay, which is long overdue, which Mr. Shalafu is going to speak about tonight.
Right.
Any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, school building needs, Mr. Stevens.
Uh, school building, uh, needs, uh, school building director, uh, gave us an update on all the building projects that are taking place. Uh, the AHRRA management update. Upcoming projects and priorities. Uh, he gave an update on Crocker Field. Uh, the grandstands are being completed. But it's the cement work. Uh, an update on the Crocker School project. The accelerated repairs at South Street with the boiler project and the roof project. Uh, boiler's complete, the roof is just about completed. Um, one of the things, Mr. Director Richardson stressed, the schools were ready for the April fifth opening today. And, uh, the custodians would continue to do a complete cleaning in the building.
Good.
That's good report.
Questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, Mr. Horgan, policy subcommittee.
Yes, we have one policy for everyone's final approval tonight, it's the grading and progress reports policy. Um, nothing, you know, breaking edge here, we're just a housekeeping change to this policy to reflect current practices. And we'll have another meeting soon for the subcommittee and have another update at our next journal meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Horgan. Questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none?
Actually, actually, I had a question. Sorry, I had a question about that before.
Okay.
Um, Aiden, should that policy be in our packet?
Yeah, the grading policy, I didn't see it either. Um, and I believe that's because the incorrect date was given on the one that was, that I relayed to. Um, so yeah, I don't think this is correct. Um, I don't.
Yeah, I wonder if we could table that because I hadn't been able to read it.
Okay, um. I sent it out ahead of time, I think just the date was incorrect, so I didn't, if no one has it in their packet, um. I guess that would make sense, the, the policy was very simple and the change was nothing that's really, like I said, breaking edge. It was just changing the progress reports. In the middle schools, there's trimester reports, report cards, not quarterly. And the policy just changed to that, so if we want to table this till next time, so we can get that in the packet, that's fine with me, but.
Well, I just haven't read it, so I don't want to vote on it, um.
Fair enough, yeah, um, sure, you can table it.
Wait, you want that for a formal vote?
Um, I make a motion to table that policy until our next.
Yeah, it's the report, so it's not coming up for a vote.
Okay.
But we'll wait till the next meeting. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, uh, yeah, student support, it's the Bell Pierce.
We have nothing new to report.
Thank you, questions, concerns, comments? Uh, personnel committee, there is nothing to. Or, or the executive committee. And now student representatives. Uh, Mr. Myra and Ms. Harding.
So, good evening, everybody, so. The only point, we just got a few points to touch upon for the transition of daytime today. So, pretty smooth from what we saw. Um, most kids were obeying the spacing and the mask wearing policies, which was nice. Uh, the lunches also went relatively well, splitting the grades into the cafeteria in the field house at Fitchburg High. Allowed for definitely the best setup that we could have came up with. The only thing that was rough at the high school was the transition to another schedule, that was kind of hectic the last week. A lot of high schoolers were upset about the new times, you know, bringing this up because today alone, we got five responses in our Google form that were concerned about work schedules and having other after-school obligations or sports practices. But because of this, Fitchburg High has implemented the advisory block, which is going to be flexible to allow these students who have to work to leave at two fifty. This block will also kind of replace what we had for office hours where students will be able to receive extra help from their teachers or will allow them to prepare for other things like AP exams or M- pass. So yeah, that's kind of a summary on how the transition is.
And, and then in terms of sports, our football team is two and O, which is great, great start to the season. And then, um, it's a remote warning day, you know, for the high school because ninety-two, um, staff are being vaccinated on Wednesday afternoon, which is always a good thing to see. So, um, Thursday is being taken as a sick for those staff.
Yeah, it was, uh, one of that, one of those victories, um. Name of the school escapes me for the moment, but they're, they're kind of right next door to us, was that one of the wins?
We played, no, we haven't played Leominster.
But they were supposed, I thought we played them last week.
They were supposed to, they were supposed to on the twenty-sixth, I believe. But the game, I don't know if it got postponed or if it got rescheduled, but I think.
Yeah, it did get postponed, yeah.
So we've played, we've played Hingham and.
Rafterdon.
Grafton.
Grafton, good. Okay. Well, that took the wind out of my sails, but anyway, okay, uh.
Is it postponed, does anybody know?
I, I, well, yeah, I think they had, Leominster had some issues that they had to deal with and, uh, I, I, I'm sure that's, it's going to be rescheduled for another, another day, but. Uh, is that, does that complete the student, uh, representatives' report?
Yes, that's all we have to report for today.
Thank you, thank you, guys. Uh, now approve the minutes for the previous school committee meeting of March.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I had a quest, I had a question for the kids.
You gotta be a little faster on the trigger there, Jeannie, you know what I mean?
I was raising my hand, I was trying to follow the format. Andrea, this is a question for you, so on the advisory, when you're saying like it could be a chance to maybe have office hours, from what I understand, you're staying in your last period class, right? Um, and then what, do you have the liberty to kind of make an appointment with a teacher if you need to talk to them or what?
Yeah, so. Yeah, so you can either, um, scan the QR code and you can leave your advisory block and you can meet with the teacher like that you're going to or that you need help with. Or, um, I know for some of my teachers, they're opening their old, um, office hours meets. So if you want to meet with them virtually and stay in that class, if that works easier or better for the teacher or the student, then we can do that as well. So, it's kind of flexible, situation dependent.
So, are your, is your attendance taken in the advisory and then you just have to kind of make whatever move you're gonna make, is that?
Yeah, we would use the QR codes to scan out of the class for contact tracing. But yeah, you do, they do take attendance in advisory, I believe.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Approval, moving on, approval of the minutes of the previous school committee of March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion made? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Uh, we can do this by unanimous consent, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose, we are unanimous. Mr. Superintendent, we don't have a need for executive session, I don't believe, right?
That is correct, no executive session this evening.
Communications, Ms. Craig, did you want to say, yes, you did, go ahead.
I did, so I wanted to invite the public to come to actual live theater. We, um, Stratton Players is presenting Artists and Ancestors, and this is a series of five vignettes to be performed at Forest Hill Cemetery on Saturday, April seventeenth and Sunday, April eighteenth. There are four shows total at two o'clock and three thirty PM. The cemetery is, of course, wheelchair accessible and, uh, the tickets are free. So they went on sale today and, uh, you just go to strattnplayers@gmail.com to register. Uh, I want to thank the mayor for purchasing an ad in our program. With, this is a historic occasion to be doing live theater, I hope it does encourage other theater companies to do theater. We are limiting the number of attendees to twenty-five. There's plenty of room for people to spread out and social distance, we do require audience wear masks. And the, um, ancestors and notables we are presenting include, um, Herbert Adams, the sculptor of the Boys in the Turtle's Fountain, H.M. Francis, the brilliant architect of Fitchburg, who designed, uh, parts of City Hall. Um, his sons also designed the, um, fa, um, the armory. And Wallace Way, not to mention hundreds of historic houses in Fitchburg. Uh, parts of the Fay Club as well, many churches, including Rollstone Congregational and the former Faith United Parish. Just an astonishing body of work. The, um, Stratton Players founders are Fay Crocker, who formerly lived at Applewild, which is now a school, and Ms. Helen Stratton, who was the head of the English Department at Fitchburg High School throughout the teens and twenties. I was just at the Historical Society today and found out that Helen Stratton in nineteen twenty-four had had the kids do a production of Twelfth Night by Shakespeare. And also Arms and the Man the following year by George Bernard Shaw. So, Fitchburg has historically been a, a really cultured and very vibrant and diverse place. And I have written five vignettes that, um, that are about these amazing people who lived here. And it's very fast-moving, the vignettes range from five to eight minutes. We do have tickets available, they are free, Fitchburg, uh, Cultural Council also sponsored this production, so we are really pleased. Stratton Players is ninety-seventh season, we have actual theater to show people. So please come, please tell the kids at the schools, please bring your kids, there's a lot of entertaining lines I was able to find um, with the characters and we're gonna have some of it broadcast on FATV, I'll keep everyone informed of that. But very, very happy to be doing live theater in Fitchburg, April seventeenth and eighteenth, so in a couple of weeks, tickets are free.
And Sally, that's rain or shine, correct?
Yes, rain or shine, so yep, bring an umbrella if you need to, but we've been praying to every god for good weather.
Any questions?
No, I just, I would like to make a comment, I think that, I just think that's fabulous and exciting, thank you so much for doing that.
Oh, thank, thank you, Rosemary. Um, I, I, um, I'm a lifelong, you know, Fitchburg culture person and I appreciate those words and I s, and if anyone wants to see the show in process, we are at North, uh, we are at Forest Hill Cemetery every Saturday from ten o'clock to about one. So if that's a place you like to walk, if you come by, you can see the rehearsal. And we'll give you a flyer, um, so you, you can be reminded. But we love it when people stop by and watch, which they have been doing.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Superintendent and, uh, FATV, do we have anyone wishing to offer a public comment?
I am not aware of anyone who is interested in making public comment this evening.
Okay. Nathan, you have no one, right? You there? Okay. Next on the agenda, superintendent's report, Mr. Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, tonight we have eight topics, uh, really to be presented by five different individuals here. And first, we want to get that started with Assistant Superintendent John Thompson, talking about the, uh, English Language Arts, uh, curriculum selection process here, presentation, so, John, floor is yours.
All right, give me one second. Wrong screen, excuse me. Are you able to see my screen? Should say, uh, for public schools, you see yellow.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you, everybody. Uh, good evening, uh, I'm here tonight with, um, some members of our elementary ELA curriculum committee to talk a little bit about our, um, review and our adoption process of our elementary curriculum. I'd like to introduce, before we get started, three members that are here with us tonight. We have, uh, Paula Carr, who is a grade-three teacher at Crocker Elementary School. Jennifer Heber, a grade-one teacher at Rheingold. Uh, Jackie Navedo, who is a kindergarten teacher at McKay, was unable to attend tonight. And, uh, last but not least, we have Katie Labono, our literacy coach from South Street Elementary. I'm gonna ask that everyone please hold their questions to the end of our presentation tonight. Uh, we have a pretty robust agenda tonight and I want to be able to get through everything. Uh, so I'm gonna get started, uh, tonight, the committee would like to share with you our findings from a year-long curriculum review and adoption process involving our current elementary English Language Arts curriculum, teacher colleges, units of study. By the end of tonight's presentation, the committee will be recommending the district purchase Houghtland-Mifflin Hard Courts Into Reading Program at Fitchburg Public Schools' new core reading program for grades K to four. Uh, before I begin, I want to, um, acknowledge all the committee members for their work and dedication over the past year. The committee members consisted of eighteen teachers and administrators from all four of our elementary schools in the district. The committee members spent many hours after school, on the weekends and vacations, reviewing curriculums. I just wanted to say thank you to all the members tonight. So, this slide, I want to begin by kind of going over the timeline of the activities that we underwent over the last year to review our existing curriculum and adopt a new curriculum. So, starting here on the left on fall twenty nineteen, after a report was published by a nonprofit organization called Student Achievement Partners, seven of the country's leading literacy experts reviewed the units of study and identified major concerns about the reading practices used in the units of study in the current research on reading. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about the current research on reading later on in tonight's presentation. Then in January, um, in February of twenty twenty, the committee met and reviewed the findings of the sixty-four-page report and identified strengths and weaknesses of the units of study. In addition, the committee learned about the latest reading research called the Science of Reading, which is how the brain learns how to read. And again, we'll talk a little bit more about that tonight. As you can see, there was a break after February twenty twenty, uh, because of COVID, so we took a, a, a break, um, reviewing the curriculum and meeting as a committee. Um, and then we reconvened in September of twenty twenty. And the committee identified the priorities we wanted in a new reading program. Also, we began reviewing all the current curriculum products on the market and looking for curriculum that met our priorities and received high ratings, um, based on text quality and organization, classroom task and instruction, accessibility and, uh, for students and usability for teachers and impact on learning. In October of twenty twenty, the committee selected four programs to examine. In November and December of twenty twenty, we met with the representatives from four different publishers for an in-depth ex, exploration of their products. Finally, in January and February of twenty twenty-one, we narrowed our selection down to two programs. Next, we broke up into four, into school teams to evaluate each program. For our evaluation, we used the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's ELA and Literacy Rubric and Fitchburg Public Schools' Criteria for Evaluating Instruction Materials and Programs Rubric. After re-review, we reconvened and our committee, um, shared out their findings. The teachers and administrators of the committee selected Into Reading as our new reading program. So that was just a little bit about this whole year-long timeline, um, that we spent looking at different curriculum. The next slide, as I mentioned before, in the fall of twenty nineteen, a report was published by a nonprofit organization called, um, Student Achievement Partners. Seven of the country's leading literacy experts reviewed the units of study and they identified several findings, um, based on, uh, their review. So, based on the review, they came up with, um, several findings, however, I condensed that into, um, one slide tonight for us to review. So based on the review, the findings suggested that there was, uh, four big areas, uh, that needed to be looked at when using units of study. Uh, those are phonemics, I'm sorry, phonics influency, text complexity and language development, English language supports and building vocabulary and knowledge and vocabulary. So if you begin up on top, phonics influency, uh, based on the, um, evaluation, the findings said that the program that we use gives little time on foundational skills, which are those, uh, phonological awareness, the sounds, uh, the, the, the letters and the phonics, the word recognition influency. So for example, uh, one of the strategies that we use in the early elementary schools with this program is having students use the pit, the illustrations on the page to figure out unknown words. Um, that's one strategy that this, uh, report really highlighted as an issue and is really, i, it is causing some students not to be able to learn how to read. In addition, the other finding under text complexity and language development was that the program has, uh, too of an instant, too unsystematic to ensure all students encounter adequate challenge or receive sufficient support for successful progress. And that instruction through read-alouds happens, but students aren't reading text themselves. So one of the biggest findings in this program is that our teachers use read-alouds for students to learn, um, how to learn certain strategies and skills in reading. However, students aren't able to actually read, um, themselves out of a select book that actually teaches knowledge and teaches those strategies because students are selecting books at their own levels and interest level. The biggest finding that I found in the report was around English language supports. Um, research-based ELL supports are barely present in the units of study. As you all know, we have a number of students who are second language learners in Fitchburg. And based on the findings of this, uh, research study, there are no supports in our program that we are currently using to actually help support um, English language students. And finally, uh, building knowledge and vocabulary. The program falls short on building knowledge systematically because students are reading books of their own choosing and comfort level. The books are not focused on lesson, topic or theme. And then weak support for vocabulary acquisition and vocab strategy, so this, these are other two big areas in the report. So the first one, where it talks about students are, um, selecting books on their own interest level. We, i, in the current program, we don't have, uh, a, a, that all students are reading and learning from. But students are all reading and learning about all different pop, uh, topics based on what they selected or what their interest levels are. There's no general story that all students are reading and learning from. And then the final one about weak support for vocabulary acquisition and strategies. Um, in the program, there isn't any direct instruction around vocabulary words or any strategies. Uh, so the, out of the sixty-four-page report, these were the major findings, um, in the report that talks a lot about, uh, some of the, um, gaps in the program that, uh, we are currently using uh, to teach students in the Fitchburg Public Schools. I'd like to now hand this over to Katie Labono, who will talk a little bit about the science of reading. Katie?
Had to remember to unmute, perfect, okay, so, what we're looking at here, um, the report such as the one that was discussed by John causes to really look at and begin research in the area of science of reading. Uh, this has been a huge movement of the last couple of years, there's a lot of information out there, um, if you'd like to look at it and look at it more closely. So first, what we have here is a quote from the two thousand eighteen Teacher Prep Review by the National Counsel, Council on Teacher Quality. It underlines the importance of using evidence-based practice. So, reading proficiency underpins all later learning. Unfortunately, some thirty percent of all children do not become capable readers. Using the knowledge gained from decades of research under the auspices of the National Institutes of Health has shown that this unacceptable rate of failure could be cut by two-thirds or even more if only schools use scientifically-based methods of reading instruction. An example of these numbers is available when we look at the data from the National Assessment of Educational Progress. According to NAEP, in Massachusetts, only forty-five percent of our fourth graders reached proficiency or higher. This, of course, leaving fifty-five percent in the categories of basic or below basic. So looking at the science of reading helps to clarify why this may be happening. All right, so, one problem that the science of reading, um, highlights is, um, the transition from research to practice. So one of the underlying challenges we face in providing high-quality reading instruction is the disconnect between the discoveries of scientists, scientific research and the application of it in schools. Uh, what this, um, this diagram is showing you is that teacher prep programs at many colleges and universities are often not preparing their future teachers with the skills they need to effectively teach reading and assess student skills. For teachers already in the profession, professional development from districts often don't connect with the research either. So this is leaving a lot of teachers, school districts and curriculum providers with the curriculum they feel is best, not necessarily what has been scientifically proven to work the best. Research-based versus evidence-based practices are often at odds. So, one of the biggest breakthroughs in research in the last twenty years came from the ability to use FMRI, functional magnetic resonance imaging machines and scans. Researchers are able to scan the brains of students and then compare them to each other and to changes in the same student once intervention has occurred. The scans seen here show a dramatic increase in the activation of the left, oh, big word, tem, temporal parietal region after intervention. This new activation is now similar to those students without reading difficulty, so you can see the change after interventions have, have been put in place. Uh, these MRI scans are showing the proof of si, of specific methods needed for reading success. So, one view of reading, if you want to switch, Mr. Thompson, is the simple view of reading, this is a big one that you'll see going around. So the simple view of reading shows what we need in order to achieve reading comprehension. We need to be able to decode and recognize words as well as comprehend language. This leads us to comprehension, one cannot exist without the other. Next, we have the continuum of reading skills, here are your big ideas, this is what we need to be doing. This slide shows in a more detailed way the instructional focus areas needed for word recognition. It is important that each step is taught explicitly and systematically to students. A breakdown or weakness in these skills will lead to difficulty reading on grade level. These steps combined with language comprehension creates skilled readers capable of fluent reading and text comprehension. Next, we have Scarborough's Rope. This is another infographic used in the science of reading, if you want to switch, Mr. Thompson, to help us understand early literacy development. Once again, Scarborough's Rope takes the concept of the simple view of reading, word recognition and language comprehension equals comprehension, and shows the sub-skills that need to be explicitly taught so they will become increasingly automatic and utilized together, thus leading to skilled reading comprehension. We are able to connect Scarborough's Rope to the big ideas on the next slide, or right here. Uh, right here, thank you. Um, as you can see, students become increasingly strategic and automatic as they move up the steps. That, combined with language comprehension, leads to skilled reading. So what's fabulous is that after the review of our current curriculum and needs assessment from the ELA Curriculum Committee last year, this year, our district leadership began to address the needs that had been identified. In the school year twenty twenty-one, there were three crucial widespread investments in providing students with explicit systematic instruction. These were the purchasing of foundations for grades kindergarten and grade one. These were the purchasing of foundations for grades kindergarten and grade one, Hegarty, which is, was purchased for pre-kindergarten, kindergarten and grade one. And the district provided professional development for all elementary staff in the science of reading provided by the Hill for Literacy. Just to go a little bit deeper into these programs, as a recognized leader in multisensory structured language programs, Wilson brings more than a decade of systematic and explicit instruction to the K to three classroom. Based on the Wilson Reading System principles, Wilson Foundations provides research-based materials and strategies essential to a comprehensive reading, spelling and handwriting program. The purchase of Hegarty Phonemic Awareness Primary Lessons is taught daily as a supplement to our existing literacy curriculum at this moment. Lessons can be used for intervention support for students in second grade and above who struggle to decode. And for our professional development course, the Hill for Literacy is doing the work around science and reading and they support the purchase of Hegarty and Foundations and are working closely with us as a district moving forward. For the school year twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, the district will continue to address our needs by continuing foundations into grades two and three, introducing hopefully the new core reading program into reading. And we'll look at tier-two interventions to support more foundational skills and implement the DIBLZ8 screener among all elementary schools. With this continued investment, Fitchburg is definitely taking the steps to provide explicit literacy instruction for all of our students that by providing instruction, by providing instruction that puts scientific research into practice, which is really exciting for us.
Okay, hello, I'm Polly Carr. As, as Katie had said, we had looked at some programs and John said we looked at four programs. We looked at EL Education, Learn Zillion, Wit and Wisdom, Wonders and Into Reading. And as a committee member and teacher of the Fitchburg Public Schools, I can confidently say that I speak for a majority of our elementary educators that we are extremely satisfied with the decision of our administration to give teachers a voice. We were allowed us, they allowed us to be part of the process in adopting a new curriculum. We worked as a group and analyzed material, materials. We followed curriculum review rubrics, as John had mentioned. We listened to representatives from each program, had interactive discussions with them virtually. We looked through the actual materials to ensure they met the needs of our students. The Into Reading had met all of our priorities that we were looking at. Mr. Thompson, if you can just change to the next slide, the priorities that we were looking at for establish for adoption of our new program was we focused on science of reading, as Katie had gone into how important it is to help with making sure we use the science-based methods of instruction. Materials needed to have strong supports for students learning English. We focused on materials that had strong supports for our special education students. Rather than having programs that, that didn't connect together, we wanted a program that encompassed all of our students. We looked at foundational skills. We looked at research and evidence-based materials. We focused on the ed reports in the curate. We looked for equity and access. We were looking for the diversity in literature. We combed through all of the materials. We looked to find that we were hitting the needs of all our students. We were showing that we were encompassing all types of diversity so that kids would connect with all of the literature that we were embarking upon. The manuals and materials had to be explicit for instruction, which would reduce the need to find educational alternatives and supplemental materials that are not aligned with our core curriculum. Are presently the program we're using now, a lot of teachers are supplementing and it becomes very disjointed amongst different classrooms, different schools. So we're looking for more uniformity and so that everybody is using the science-based research. When we looked into the ed reports and Into Reading, the the program, it for grades K to two and three to eight, it met expectations on all the criteria for text quality, building knowledge and usability.
Good evening, I'm Jen Hebert. As we explored the program, some of the key components that supported our selection were high-quality authentic literature that is culturally diverse and builds knowledge across disciplines. The literature creates a focus for writing and classroom discussions. Essential questions, background knowledge, explicit vocabulary instruction and critical thinking are embedded in the lessons. There is an emphasis on foundational skill lessons to support young learners. Engaging authentic literature begins each writing module. There are mentor texts containing, contained in each module and explicit lessons on how students can use the mentor text strategies to enhance their writing piece. There's a writer's notebook that gives students the chance to learn the basic skills of writing conventions and grammar. Anchor charts highlight important aspects of learning in each module and provide a visual format for organ, for organization. There are scaffolds embedded in the program to provide initial explicit instruction needed to facilitate student independence. Differentiated instruction, embedded growth mindset strategies and a strong foundation in social emotional learning help children believe in the power of I can. If we could advance to the next slide, we will now view a video to highlight additional components of the program.
Hello and welcome to Into Reading, a new resource by Houghton Mifflin-Hartcourt for your English Language Arts Classroom, where we put everything at your fingertips in one location. Our resources have a strong foundation in social emotional learning, making sure that we meet those needs so that we can truly engage your students in great conversations around great texts. Into Reading students love our authentic literature. They're going to find authors and illustrators that they're going to fall in love with and want to find at their local library. We know that great texts build great readers and we start by building background knowledge, including great video content to engage our students and get them thinking. And then we support those with great graphic organizers to help them organize some of those thoughts. We want to make sure that we do everything we can to prepare great students for reading. And so we provide you plenty of resources backed by research, including our Alpha Friends videos. Instruction continues with vocabulary as we practice daily on our vocabulary skills before we head into our texts. Big Books and Read Alouds at K one and two and all other students working within their Student My Book replace all of those great authentic pieces of literature into a consumable student edition. Everything in one location and everything I need in my teaching pal, complete with post-its that are labeled with depth of knowledge level, so I always know the rigor required with each question I ask. This is just one resource that I'll have at my fingertips to support reading instruction. Online, I can browse my resources by module, even head online into my Student My Book where I can utilize the audio tools. Use my read-along highlight tool there. But I can also use my tier-review button to choose my class and a particular student and then I can see directly into their student book, holding them accountable for any work that they may be doing when they're online. Small group instruction is another key element of Into Reading, starting with our rugby-level library, ninety titles at every grade level. Our Start Write readers at K one and two, giving our students opportunities to practice those phonics skills. Tabletop lessons for reading and English language development that provide me some great pieces to take to that table with me to support the day's instruction. Tier-two support takes place in our Read and Respond Journal at a more accessible text. And for our tier-three students who have some needs around foundational skills, more can be found online. Writing Workshop is a daily process in Into Reading, including opportunities for students to respond to literature right in their My Book. Essential questions can be answered, essays worked through, and in my Writing Workshop Teacher's Guide, twelve modules of writing with everything I need to be successful with my writing instruction, including mentor texts that come as part of the program. Lessons on how to use that mentor text along with other key resources, including embedded grammar support and everything that I might need to teach a grammar lesson on a daily basis with plenty of resources to support that grammar skills acquisition. For our upper grade levels, online writing is possible on Ed with my student book on one side and my writing prompt on the other. I can embed all of my notes that I've been taking. Just one of the pieces that I can do online, like looking at my student data, taking a look at how my students are doing overall or even how they did on that last quiz we took. Who are those kiddos who are struggling the most? Click on that part and see. Scroll down a little bit further, check out who got which questions right or wrong or how long they took on that test. Which were the most frequently missed items or what are the standards aligned to this quiz or even ask Ed to recommend groups? All of this and more is covered in your professional learning sessions where we give you everything you need to get started but are always by your side through our teacher's corner. Into Reading is a truly great resource that we think you'll love and your students will enjoy too. For more information, visit us at hmhco.com.
So, that is our presentation on Into Reading and we are recommending that the schools committee support our decision in purchasing Houghton Mifflin-Hartcourt's 2020 Into Reading Program as Fitchburg's next program for literacy instruction for elementary schools.
What's the price tag for that, Jen?
Right now, for fitting all student, all eighteen teachers in addition to special ed teachers in our four schools, it's close to a million dollars.
What?
Yep.
Say again?
One million dollars almost, close to a million. Yep.
Boy, that's a big ouch. And we're getting this where?
So there's one, one publisher that publishes the, you mean getting the money or getting the program, Mr. D?
Getting the money.
We do have money set aside for this. We've been looking at this program and other programs for years now. So there has been money set aside to make this purchase and we do have the funds to support this.
Okay. Bob, I think Ms. Reynolds wants to say something.
Yeah, I'd like to say that embedded in the presentation is a very, very troublesome issue. And that is the, when you speak of equity, access and diversity, I have other things to say about the other thing, but this is certainly the most important. And I certainly wouldn't be promoting this program, this, the educational learning part is good, but it's a cultural presentations that are particularly harmful to our children, I believe. And I couldn't support that particular part of the program. I think it's extremely harmful, extremely, you, you put a very strong emphasis on the scientific basis of your findings and your recommendations. And this cultural equity, access, diversity is certainly couldn't be scientifically based because it's a relatively new subject. Extremely opposed by many, many people, myself included, of course. And certainly don't have the longevity to see what harm we might be bringing to our children. So, I will actively say, unless you change that particular portion, I have no, I have no problem with the study of learning how to read. But as far as changing our culture with what we read and presenting that under the umbrella of learning how to read, I strongly, strongly oppose. In fact, I'll go so far and this may shock you, I actually think it's criminal what we're doing to the young people, experimenting with them. Excuse me, Ed, finish?
Well, I have a question for you.
Well, when I finish, when I finish, I'd like to answer your question, but I don't want to be interrupted. Okay? Basically, I guess you get the point, but I would have a lot more to say in time. Okay, Jean, what, what can I do?
I feel like I need clarification of what you're, what you think the program is doing.
Yeah.
Like, are you?
I can.
And I think maybe the, maybe the committee could explain what is meant by the cultural diversity part, right? I, I guess I'm not really sure, but you're, have you, have you seen the materials or is it just?
I recognize the language and I see what's being done on a broad basis locally and nationally. And it's coming down to where it's, it's pulling children away from recognizing that they're a boy or a girl. And I don't think this is, this is anything that's.
No, that's, that's not what we're, that's not what we're doing.
That at all.
No, so Rosemary, when we talk, let me, let me answer your, let me kind of address your statement.
Kind of jumped in on what I was saying, everybody.
So, no, I just want to make sure you understand that when we talk about culturally appropriate books, we're talking about the books that our students are reading that we have a number of different characters that look like our students in the, in the stories that we read. And we're giving students, we're exposing students from a variety of cultures in the literature that they read.
Well, you know, when you say Houghton Mifflin, which is certainly an extremely well-known place, I, I would like to read the books, but I know in general, and I've had many discussions with top-level people about what's slipping in under the guise of education. So, Mr. Thompson, if you make those books available to me, that the specific diversity literature, I would be happy to come and read it and speak at another meeting about it. Would you do that for me?
Absolutely, Rosemary. I'd be more than happy to sit with you and go over the texts.
Okay, the sooner the better. Okay, thank you.
I have a question and a comment. Personally, this is really nothing to do, this is just in reaction to what my fellow committee member said, that I hope that we would find the materials that represent the children in front of us. And the children in front of us have many identities, right? Lots of different identities and I think it would be just a failure of duty and a failure of humanity to not recognize that there are a variety of belief systems in this country. But that, that is just a comment. My question is really more about what is the science of reading telling us about dyslexia and and what about, like, I, I, like mostly we don't really use dyslexia anymore as a term, right? I think we talk about like a non-specified learning disability. And I'm just curious, like, at what point do we identify that for, for young readers? Because I have, I had a conversation with somebody in my district about the Orton-Gillingham system or the Wilson system. I don't know if you guys could speak to that a little bit. But is that, is that a piece of maybe the puzzle that's going on for a lot of readers? Like, so basically, when do we test for that? When, and does this Houghton Mifflin product address this, you know, students who maybe have dyslexia or some, you know, unspecified learning disability?
That, that's a great question, Jean, and I'm going to start and I'm going to have Rowan pick, pick up after me. So, beginning next year, we have to start screening all our students for dyslexia. So, one of the three things, Jean, that we already use is iReady for reading and math assessment. And because we use iReady, they have actually rolled out a phonics, I'm sorry, a dyslexia screener. So what will, in the fall, all our students will take their regular ELA fall assessment. And based on that, the, the report, there are, a report will come out telling us all the students who are at risk of reading difficulties and what students need to actually be screened for dyslexia. So what that list, we then will look at each school and then screen those students. and then screen those students using iReady's Dyslexia Screener to see if they actually do have specific, those traits around, you know, possibly having dyslexia. And if any student does have something that comes up and saying there is, could be some dyslexia or concern for dyslexia, then we would actually bring that to Rowan, the manager's attention. And Rowan, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, then we would take a look at how that disability could be impacting their learning. So whether they're making progress or not. So that would then go into a referral process. We do have Orton Gillingham in the district as well. It's a tier-three model that we use, and we do train our special ed teachers in it. We do also have, we currently have very few teachers trained in the full Wilson reading because it is a very intensive training program. But Alyssa and I are taking a look at whether we are going to invest in some special ed teachers because it's a multi-year process. And when we have turnover that we do, we want to make sure we give the right type of training to our staff. So we've been leaning more towards Orton Gillingham. So, most of our special ed teachers are going through the Orton Gillingham training.
And so, on the iReady, John and Rowan, just to follow up. So, that is with kindergarten and readers as well?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for those answers.
Hello, Mr. Mayor?
The superintendent, this is his portion of the agenda. You want to be recognized, he can recognize you. Go ahead. Go ahead, Rosemary. What do you have to say?
Well, I can wait for Sally, and I don't know who else that didn't speak yet. John James Walsh, I guess.
Bob, you keeping track of whose turn it is to speak?
Yeah, I'm watching here. I think Sally was first, and then Jim.
And then me.
And then Rosemary.
I want to get in on this too, also.
Yeah, so while the program was going on, I got onto their website. And there's one element that we haven't heard specifically, which is this program seems to be also designed to address the learning, the deficits that have occurred in the last year. And that is of enormous interest to me, and I'm really excited about it because of that. That's one element. The other one is that, you know, creating, providing books and reading that is aimed at boys, that is aimed at Latinx boys, that is aimed at, you know, African-American boys and biracial boys, as well as females. We know that boys are proportionately more likely to be in a pull-out reading group or a separate classroom. And why? We don't know. I don't know the science on that. Maybe someone does. However, a program that is designed for the kids that we have right here and right now in our classrooms seems both thoughtful and caring and ahead of the curve. And that is why I support this decision, along with the fact that as I look on the number of teachers on my handout, we have real veteran teachers who have been teaching for a very long time. They are part of the committee. So they would have reviewed this program in far greater depth than me or any of us on the school committee. And I agree with what folks have said since I've been on school committee, and which I know Bob says quite often, which is, I defer to the experts. I think that the people we've heard from tonight are experts. And I know from having worked with Rowan that she's an expert. And I certainly know that John Thompson is an expert. And I am not an expert, but I am a parent. I'm fortunate because my kids were good readers, enthusiastic readers, and I am very grateful that they have been well-served by the reading instruction they have received in Fitchburg schools. But I also know of their classmates who struggled, and teachers who struggled with students. And the specificity of the interaction that teachers can do, and granted, it's all, you know, there's computer stuff that is so much more complicated, I think, than we're used to seeing. The fact that a teacher can go in and see how a student is doing on a test, on a question on a test, there's a precision that that's going to, you know, reveal that I think will be incredibly helpful to our instructors. We're here for these kids, and we're here to support the teachers. So, I'm really pleased to see this, and I really thank John, Mr. Thompson, for the presentation. I am really curious to learn more and to dig deeper into this website. So, thank you.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. When John began the presentation, and I think it was the second slide, when I saw the list of the people who worked on this for, I think, a considerable length of time, I can't imagine having a better group of people who I consider experts in deciding what's best for our children when it comes to English language arts. And just as Sally said, I'm far from being an expert on reading curriculum. And I realized that the four final products that they considered, there are probably a lot of similarities. And it probably was a tough decision to pick out the one that would best represent our student population. And I trust that the committee did what is best for our students and best for our teachers, to provide the resources for our teachers, to provide the best teaching possible to our students. And I support what they're recommending. I think it's appropriate that a new, up-to-date curriculum be approved. And as has been said a few times already, that the curriculum and the materials that our students use reflect what our student population looks like in Fitchburg. So, thank you all who were involved. I appreciate your time and effort. And I support what you're recommending to us tonight. Thank you.
Rosemary, you go ahead, and I'll go after you.
Okay. Yeah, I was very excited by everything that was presented, except this one aspect which I've addressed. And Jean, perhaps you would like to come with me, or whatever, when John Thompson presents the books, and we could both read them together and discuss. We toss around words that aren't actually grounded in... And that's where we go off, is when, what do we mean by identity? And when Jean's, I think you said, there's many identities. See, I think there's one identity. So, we have to, when you talk about a boy or a girl, I think that's one, somebody's a boy, somebody's a girl. I don't think you say, the cruelty that I'm speaking of is when you say to a young child, "What would you like to be?" Oh, you know, you can change that if you'd like to. I think that this is the cruelty of it. It's not instructional education and learning language. It's a cultural bombshell that's underlying there. So that's my...
Point of order. I'd like to say a point of order right here because...
Point of order, I agree.
Point of order. We're not discussing this topic. We're discussing a reading program. Thank you.
Well, the reading program includes a topic.
Well, that is not correct.
Well, I think it is, so...
But everyone here said it's not. So it's a point of order? Mayor, I think we need to move on.
I'm sorry you dismissed that so easily, Sally. It's a very, very deep, runs very, very deep.
Rosemary, I believe you are talking about the transgender individuals. And at no point has that topic come up in this discussion, the reading program or anything. This is a point of order.
What I'm saying is it's embedded in this certain section, and that's a section that I would like to study. And if it isn't, that would be wonderful. But it bears to be watchful and guardians...
Point of order.
It bears study.
Point of order.
Folks, what some committee do you think this discussion could go?
Student support.
I'd like to recommend, yes, I would like to recommend that transgender rights and identity be a topic that we bring to student support.
Absolutely.
And I disagree with everything else.
I agree. We'll have that discussion at the student support meeting. Thank you.
So, can I make a closing comment? Jim, go ahead, and then I'll make a closing comment after you.
Bob, I want to make, just make a comment.
Go ahead, yeah, Pete.
Yeah. I just want to thank the teachers and the staff that put this program together. I know for many years I was involved in this. So I know the work, the amount of work that the teachers and staff have put into this. And to bring the city together, again, our four elementary schools with the same program. So, we always talked about when a child moved from Proctor to McKay or Rhengold to South Street, they were all involved with the same program. So to bring this program back together, I think has been an outstanding job that you have done, knowing most of the teachers that, some of them I've worked with and worked for, even hired. They're outstanding people that have just done a wonderful job. And we need to support the staff. We don't need to go into conspiracy theories on something. And I agree, I would like to see the program. I think Houghton Mifflin would, any member of the school committee would like to see it, not just Rosemary or Jean. Jonathan, maybe a presentation could be made. And it's so important that we move along with this program. I support it wholeheartedly.
Jim?
Just a quick question for, I guess, John, you, Mr. Superintendent of the committee. How soon do we have to vote to recommend accepting this curriculum and so that a new curriculum is in place for the beginning of the next school year, the 2021, 22?
Yeah, so technically, the school committee is not required to vote on the curriculum.
Right.
Point of, I think it's not the curriculum, but when you do put in a new series, the school committee does have to vote for it. A new program. That's part of our job to approve a new adoption.
So, Pete, I actually looked into that, and I looked at our policies, and I looked in the master general law. And I didn't, for school committees and the rights, and I didn't see that in there. Unless I'm missing something, I didn't see that in either the policy or the rights of the school committee.
I will look, Jonathan, but it was in, it was in match general laws under school committees would approve new adoptions.
My understanding is it's the fiscal piece that goes along with purchasing a large, such as a whole new curriculum.
Yes. Well, that, I think I made my point clearer. The cost of the program, that is...
So, can I have a word?
Bob, we would discuss the cost. There's some questions we can discuss offline.
Yeah, I think...
Okay.
Is the cost number larger probably than the committee has seen? Yes. Let's step back first a little bit. Number one, John is Assistant Superintendent. His master's degree is in reading. He has assembled reading and literacy experts at each of the elementary schools. I can't think of a better person and team come before this committee and make a recommendation based on data. Just think about one of the things that he said earlier in the meeting, that 30% of fourth graders are not at grade level. And that this program can reduce that by two-thirds. So, let's put that into real numbers here. If our fourth-grade class is 400 students, and let's say if 30% are not reading at grade level, that's 120 students a year. So if that 120 students goes on in each successive grade level for eight years, that's 960 students. That's roughly 20% of our students will not be at grade level throughout the district. If we can reduce that by 20%, or two-thirds, down to 40, we'll save 640 students throughout our district. That's huge. The impacts on that, as we have Jen Scott here to talk about Portrait of a Graduate, literacy, the soft skills, the hard skills that's required to be competitive in a global workforce. I can't think of a better investment to make. So... Ms. Reynolds?
Again, I'm going to say that how impressed I was with everything except one aspect. So, I also note that I seem to have tender ears at what I'm trying to say here. But I do think that the school committee does approve books used in programs. Does it not? That was my reading of it. That's one thing that we do have...
Approved. Can you give the comment?
That we approve the textbooks, the books that are used. I think that's one of the powers of the school committee.
Sally?
So, we did have that approval about 150 years ago. We do not approve texts. We leave that to the experts. We do approve expenditures, as Rowan pointed out. I do not want the responsibility of approving texts in our schools because we have experts to do that. We are voted in to care for all our students. And that includes students that are not, that are more challenging. Or, I'm sorry, I don't want to say that. What I want to say is, we are here for all students. We have a diverse community, and we need to support every child. And I'm glad we have experts to do that. Thank you.
I would like to say something, and I, maybe I'm opening up a quagmire. And I'm sorry, but I can't not say this. I grew up in a time when no one spoke of anyone who is gay or recognized the rights of anybody who was gay. And I have a sibling who is gay and suffered. He suffered because his identity was denied. So, I take this very passionately. And I will take it to the student support meeting. I welcome anyone in the public, in the school system, in the school committee who wants to talk about it. But, and I agree, and I just want to say thank you. And it's so good to see Ms. Hebert, I remember from my daughter's first-grade classes. So, these are the great teachers that we have in our system, and I trust them as well. But the bigger point to me is, we cannot deny representation of people. So, I'm sorry, I don't mean to violate the point of order, but I just can't...
Can I say one more thing to Mr. Dean Atalius' point of the cost of the program? I should have said that the cost is so high because the way reading programs are purchased now are for six years. So we're buying all the materials for six years upfront at one cost. We will never be charged a dime again for the next six years. I should have led with that. Sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, that, yeah, that does provide me a little more context. Thank you. It's still, I'm sorry, but yeah, I was a little, you know, staggered by that number. Somebody should have given me a heads up. But, no. So, we're going to take this up at the student support subcommittee. And I welcome everyone and anyone that wishes to attend. Please do. And Ms. Reynolds, I appreciate your concern and your right to speak your concern. God bless America. Thank you. All right, what do we got next?
Okay.
Superintendent, you're on.
Thank you. Next up is Portrait of a Graduate program. We have a few people here tonight. We have Jen Scott, Assistant Principal from Fitchburg High School, who is the high school and, I guess, district coordinator for Portrait of a Graduate, or POG, I guess, as we refer to in shorthand. Actually, we also have Jeremy Roach joining us, principal here. I didn't see you earlier, Jeremy. And Lauren Mountain and Fagan Forthan from Mount Wachusett Community College. So, welcome, everybody. And Jen, the screen is yours.
Thank you. So I'm just going to spin up.
Okay, so if Andrea is still here, she is going to be my go-to in case something goes horribly wrong. So Andrea, are you still on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so I'm going to ask you to text me if I freeze or you can't see my presentation.
Okay, will do, got it.
Got me, okay. So Mr. Jokel will let you know, my name's Jennifer Scott. For those of you that don't know me, I am one of the assistant principals at Fitchburg High School and feel really lucky to be a part of Portrait of a Graduate. So we began last January. I'm going to give you a little bit of overview of what it is and why it's important. But like Mr. Jokel has said, we have two, so I've heard the word expert tonight. So we have two experts here with me. Fagan and Lauren are absolutely welcome to jump in anytime and fill in the gaps if, if there are some. So the Portrait of a Graduate, if you haven't heard about it before, it's an opportunity we were presented with by the Bar Foundation and Mount Wachusett Community College to collaborate with Lemonster Gardner and Winchenden to examine the current high school experience and to make sure that we're preparing our students for our success. That is hugely important, I think, as you all know. Because we want to make sure that we're including what's most important and most valuable for our students. Their guardians, our business owners and our community members. And it's an opportunity to, to define what we, what we want all Fitchburg Public students to know and be able to do before they graduate. So this was truly an inclusive project. So we heard from thousands of people, which you will see. John, I'm kind of jealous about your timeline, to be honest. I saw yours come up and like, oh, he had this really clean crisp timeline. But so we began last January, we received the Bar Foundation grant. We went to Boston for a kickoff. So I was there, Lauren was there, Fagan. We also had Megan from Winchenden Public Schools and Michelle Oliveri, who's the assistant principal for Lemonster. So truly collaborative. We began identifying who our working team would be, making sure that we were representing all three levels of our school. So we had Albert Mercado voicing in from our elementary schools. Tammy Chandler, who is still part of the project, she's been unbelievable. So she represents both the middle school as well as a parent. Sheila, one of our parents, she was in in the beginning and attended meetings and that was really important to us. Even more so, we had two students, so Bruna is still with us. She's our student representative for this project and was integral in some of the focus groups and has been attending most, if not all of the meetings. So back in this time last year, we began our research and began holding our focus groups. But similar to the E L A curriculum work that John was talking about earlier, we also paused. So we just didn't feel like we could engage our stakeholders the way that we wanted to. So we did take a break and we kicked it back up in September with more surveys, held more focus groups. We were lucky enough to still observe best practices in our partner schools and even outside of those districts. So we went in and visited virtually. I'm going to give Mr. Shalafu a shout out for this because his former school, Long Joe, was one of the best classes that I visited. It was a fifth grade inclusive math class. And all of the things that we were hoping to see in a classroom were evident in that room. So that was one of the highlights for me. We also did our own research and held literature studies, again, looking for sort of what we can currently do to disrupt education in the best possible way. From January until now, we have analyzed the data. So Nora from Inspired to Change out in Colorado did an unbelievable and he like hugely comprehensive job of presenting all of the data to us. I think John Thompson and Adam Renda and Bob Jokel were all part of that meeting. She had over a hundred slides and it was like, it was so interesting that an hour and a half went by and we were all still like right there with her, learning about what all of the people that we spoke to and surveyed had to say. So recently, we went through all the data, synthesized everything and the marketing department geniuses at Mount Wachusett Community College were the first to sort of put that to paper and created a visual to represent all of that. So here's like, again, Nora had 150 slides. We certainly don't have time for that tonight, so I'm just going to give you the, the overview. So almost 2,000 students responded to us either through a focus group or survey. 480 of those were specific to Fitchburg High School. We had almost 400 alumni, so over a hundred from Fitchburg High School. And again, like we were looking for alumni. So if you're on here and you're an alum and you weren't surveyed, don't be offended. We just, we really wanted to focus on the graduates that just left us. So our like 19, 20, 21, 23 year olds. 304 teachers and staff members, 80 of which were from Fitchburg High School participated. And then we had over 600 people in focus groups, 150 were from Fitchburg Public Schools. So here are some of the overarching themes that came out of that data gathering. So personal connections are really, really important. So our students said that over and over, our staff, our alumni, our community members. They also expressed that being able to explore your passions. So if you're interested in business or music, art, science, that you have the freedom and flexibility to do that within the school day. And everyone was really talking about critical thinking skills and how important it is to develop those before you leave high school. There were some areas that our stakeholders identified as like opportunities for growth for Fitchburg Public Schools. One area was learning those everyday life skills. So I think Mr. Jokel was talking about like soft skills earlier. So definitely those, like how do I, how do I interview for my first job? How do I have a conversation with an adult that I'm really nervous about? How do I fill out a W two form? Like can I do those types of things in a low-stakes supportive environment like my school before I'm doing it for an actual job or I'm filling out an application in front of a, a potential employer? Can I practice those things with you first? Our students also talked about interpersonal relationships and how important it is for them to be able to develop those during the school day. At last week's listening sessions and a virtual art show, one of our students spoke about how much he learns in collaborative groups and classes and wishes that he was doing it more often. And then again, this professionalism, our students want to feel prepared to go out and interview, to go and speak in front of a group of people. They want to know how to shake someone's hand, how to look them in the eye, like all of those soft skills outside of like the traditional curriculum. So at the top right-hand side, you're going to see either an S, an A or a T. And it's just letting you know, okay, the top three things, is this something that a student said? Is this something that our alumni said or is this representative of our teachers? So when we asked them what the three most valuable things about the high school experience, students, again, number one thing was teachers and friends that care about them. The second thing that they felt was most valuable is being able to explore different passions. And then the third thing that they said was academic knowledge. When we surveyed our alumni, they were completely aligned with those three things. So teachers and friends, absolutely, that relationship was number one. Being able to explore what, what they're interested in, that came in at number two. And academic knowledge for them was also number three. So that's my, my dog, she's agreeing, I think. Teachers, this is where it varied a little bit. Teachers marked problem solving and critical thinking as the number one skill. They felt academic knowledge was number two and then they placed that relationship at number three. So teachers and friends that care about me. When we asked them about skills, so students, what they needed to have and what they needed to develop before graduating high school, students felt the, the number one thing that they want to be able to do is be responsible. They put problem solving and critical thinking as their second. And then financial literacy is something that has surfaced over and over again for us in the past year. And in a different presentation, I, I shared what I think that our students are really looking for is financial dignity. They want to be in control of their finances, they want to feel professional about their finances, secure. And that's an area right now where they're feeling like they just don't have the information and the confidence. And they're looking for it. Our alumni, again, completely aligned to our current students. Responsibility for them, number one, problem solving. And then that financial literacy, again, really, really important to them. Teachers, a little bit different, so they put problem solving at the top. Responsibility was number two and interpersonal communication and collaboration was three. So again, like, I think we had maybe eight or nine top things and I'm just showing you the top three, but you can see the alignment and the trends for sure. So the marketing department at Mount Wachusett took all of that. So the thousands and thousands of data points. And this was the first iteration of our draft portrait. And we shared this with different stakeholders, received some feedback and then made some changes based on what we heard and what people said. So this is the second iteration of the Portrait of a Graduate. And so what we're really hoping that graduates are able to do is thrive, aspire, connect, explore, contribute and adapt. And we want to make sure that our graduates are competent communicators, they're critical and creative thinkers, they're problem solvers, that they're responsible, self-aware. And change-making came up over and over. So when we're talking about students, they want a seat at the table. They want to know that they can enact change, that their voice matters, that their opinion matters. I know, I think it was Paula was saying in the presentation earlier, how important it was for the, all of those teachers to be a part of that process and that it wasn't a decision that was just made for them. But our students feel the same exact way. So at the high school, they want to be a part of the conversation, they want a seat at the table. And Gina, I'm just thinking about like the student support. I know that there are students that feel passionately about that topic and they would want to be in that conversation. So I'm not going to read like all of this for you, but this goes down even to sort of, if you're thinking about connect and explore at a macro level, it goes down to the micro level and what exactly people were saying as far as what we want students to be able to do and what they want themselves to be able to do and know. So I'll go through.
Is it okay for me to jump in or should I wait?
Yeah, no, I have like two more slides, so.
Okay, I'll wait.
Okay, but I would love for you to jump in. Okay, so recent events, so Sally, I know that you're going to love this. There was a virtual art show and the art is still up. So we asked some of our students, like we invited them to represent visually what their perfect high school would be, like the types of things that they would want to see. So I'm happy to say that I think out of the 30 or so submissions, there were about 20 that were specific to Fitchburg Public Schools. So we had some artists from South Street that participated and we had quite a few artists from Fitchburg High School participate. So you can still go on and see their artwork. If you go on to, I think it's through the Fitchburg Art Museum, Lauren can probably help me with that. But you can go and see like some of the representations that they did. And they also did an artist statement, so some are speaking to a video and some wrote about it. And then there's also, and Lauren can definitely tell you more about this. One of the specific things that came out of this work is this need to have things that live sort of outside of the, the typical curriculum. So all of the things that our students were specifically asking for, like I want to know how to change a tire. I would like to know how to make a healthy meal. Can you please just like maybe role play with me and pretend you're my boss and we're having an interview? So we're doing that on April 14th. There's a virtual student conference where students can go and sign up for these different workshops and learn the things that they're really truly asking to learn. And this is where I wish I had seen Katie's slide with Scarborough's rope because it probably would have been a better image than the, than the one that I have here. But the big idea behind this is that Portrait of a Graduate is not something separate. It's not like its own thing, it's embedded in everything that we do. So if we're talking about our dual enrollment offerings or developing curriculum or teaching and learning, our NIESC accreditation, we have a decennial visit coming up, our school-wide instructional focus, sports and what we're offering for extracurriculars, equity, like all of it. That Portrait of a Graduate, it should really be like that rope or that braid where all of these things are one thing. It's the thing, it's not like 11 different initiatives. So the impact that it's had recently, and I think this is my last slide. But recently, what's come out of that is courses that, that students are asking for. So things like digital citizenship, that's new this year. That financial literacy piece, so we offer that freshman year. We're also offering it as push-ins for seniors, but that will be embedded in the curriculum next year. Things like animation, the computer science, so with our early college high school. And Fagan can talk about this if anyone's interested, like adding that fourth track in. Innovation career pathways, like all of it, students, inquiries, ways, the healthy minds. Right now, our students are embarking on a grade nine interdisciplinary identity project where they're talking about from where they come and then they're making predictions about their future world and where they'll be and what they'll be doing. Even our summer enrichment, so this is coming into play there as far as what our offerings will be and making sure that those are aligned to what students told us they want. Having students open bank accounts, again, that financial dignity piece, offering internships. So I'm really excited about that for next year. And then change-making, so making sure that we're offering opportunities to our students for them to have their voices heard and their solutions presented and supporting them as they implement them. So to wrap up, so this is where we're at right now. And I can go ahead or Lauren or Fagan can put the feedback forum link right in the chat. And then we're asking for your feedback on this as a visual. And again, that was like a lot of information, but I'm hoping you understand at a high level what we're trying to do. And then just the important piece of making sure that our students are with us and their voices are heard through all of it. So Lauren, if you want to jump in now or Fagan, if you want to jump in or if anybody has any questions.
I think you did such a great job presenting, Jen, thank you so much. So I, I don't know if maybe people have questions and I can help answer questions, just in the interest of time. I can certainly, you guys know I can always add more information. Okay, so I'll say this, my perspective in this, in addition to being, you know, one of the project leads at the college, is I'm also a Fitchburg parent. So my children are going to be graduating from Fitchburg High with the class of 2031 and 2033. So and we think, okay, well, what is our world going to look like then? And how on earth do we prepare for that? That really is a big part of what this is all about, right? So the, the rate of change is getting faster and faster and faster. How on earth are we supposed to keep up with it, right? And then there's this dynamic where we all see it, there's a definite disconnect between K through 12, higher education and the workforce. They're saying, I'm not getting the people I need, they don't have the skills I have. What's wrong with kids today? They're not ready to work, they're not professional. Meanwhile, hybrid is, is saying, we're gonna, you're gonna have to register for these remedial courses because you're not ready to take college-level courses. It's nobody's fault, right? But we all need to do a much better job of coordinating our activities. And what's really been missing to all of this is really having a student voice be in the forefront of it all. So that's been our, our biggest emphasis throughout this. And I think there's frankly, a lot more we can do to ensure that student voice is part of this. But I think the data part of this has been so exciting because we got to hear from students directly about what they wanted and what they think. And, and yes, as Jen described, a lot of students did tell us very specific things that they want to be learning before they're sent out into adulthood. I want to know how to change tire, I want to know how to cook something that's not ramen noodles. Wrong in the traditional school day? And do we want to change our, all of our curriculum so we're teaching students how to change tires? Is that going to be relevant to them in 10 years? Who knows? What's more important and what we came up with with the portrait are skills, traits and abilities so that students have the resiliency and the passion for learning so that they can adapt no matter what the future looks like. And that they will be committed and understand their responsibility as a part of. And that they will be committed and understand their responsibility as a part of our community. So one other element I want to add to this is that this is a collaboration across North Central Mass. So there's a lot of collaborations in place, like the Community Health Assessment Network area, for example. There's a lot of that happening. And in North Central Mass, we are a tightly knit community, students sometimes transfer between our schools. And it's very confusing for them trying to adapt between one school and the other and then transition to college. Why we can't all learn together and make some improvements. So that's another big piece of this. So yeah, that's that's what I wanted to add and then I'll zip it for now.
And I'll just add in one piece, I'll be quickly because I'll be quick because you guys really did a tremendous job. Fitchburg has been such an amazing partner in this work, I mean, in all the work that we've been doing. But it is so inspiring as a parent and as a North Central Mass resident. To see the willingness to begin to look at education a little bit differently. One thing that came through the data loud and clear is that students, alumni and teachers. Felt that the academics were very solid, felt very prepared for life. When with regard to the academic knowledge. But what was really kind of a gap that was identified is exactly what these ladies noted. But that our students are coming to us with their whole selves, with everything that's going on at home. With every identity that they bring to the table. And they are experiencing school, not just in the academic sense of it, but with their whole selves. And so they're really looking to find experiences that will allow them to connect who they are outside of school. With who they are inside school. And to be able to experience coursework that really starts to tie those things together a little bit differently. And to have some voice and some choice in what those courses are. So the academics are solid, but really looking for just a little bit more. Ability to steer their education.
I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation and Jen, it's just really great. I'll get on the feedback forum after and do that. And I think the fact that being a change maker, you know, presents so highly for these kids doesn't surprise me. Because I feel like that is really what you you all teach at Fitchburg High School, right? And what I'd be curious to see, and and to me, like the big word is agency, right? Like the the student sees that they are part of their education and they steer, like you just said, Fagan, they steer their education, right? So the two questions that I'd have are, like, how do you see a continuum for that from ninth through twelfth? So that it's not just something that, you know, they start thinking at twelfth grade, well, I should really prepare for interviews, right? But that they see like that continuum. And then how do you see it being fairly distributed between kids who are in honors or non honors? Or like dual enrollment or not dual enrollment? I mean, there's so many different like pathways that kids take there. How do you, so how do you ensure it's nine through twelve and how do you ensure it's every kid?
Yeah, so I think those are really good questions. I think so right now, just as an example, we're piloting with our ninth grade, a project that we would like to be required for all ninth graders for next year. So there are ways to embed into sort of like our core classes, these ideas for sure. But at the same time, you do want students to have that agency and that opportunity to sort of steer their own course. I mean, there are the requirements that we we need to have, but we're not looking at this to be something that is. Only for, like, we don't want to exceptionalize students, right? So only a certain group has this experience. And maybe I didn't do a great job of explaining, we want this embedded in everything that we're doing. So regardless of whether or not you're a first generation, a newcomer, an honors academy student, a dual enrollment. You're, it should be the living experience of a Fitchburg High student. I wouldn't even say nine through twelve, I mean, I think the big goal is for it to be K through twelve.
And Jen, I would just add on to that, that through the bar foundation, we had an opportunity to have a team from our broader Portrait of a Graduate group. Participate in a special training on equitable design. And looking at how do we design systems that ensure access and equity for everybody? So, you know, there are certain things about education and the way we operate that just are not fair and equitable for everybody. Why are they like that? Well, at one point in the past, somebody intentionally designed them to be that way. The only way we can dismantle that inequity is for us to intentionally look at what we're doing. And design it in a way that it's going to work for our most marginalized populations. And if it works for them, then it can work for everybody. So that's that's an important piece of this as well is, you know, kind of if we look at next steps, we've done all this great work. All right, the work is over. No, the work's not over, this is just the beginning. And we have a lot of support from a whole network of people in our learning community, from schools around New England. That are doing this work and can give us advice and even shortcuts in some cases. But the next step is for us to do some action planning. So looking at our draft portrait, how close are we to what we want to be? You know, looking at, you know, what do we actually need to do to get there? And how can that tie into the things that are already happening? So we don't have to do things, do more, but we do things differently. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Jen. Jen has been an incredible leader throughout all of this. Very responsive, you know, Jen has a lot of responsibility on her plate and even more so this year with COVID. And I'm just, I'm so impressed and I love working with Jen and Jen, you've done a great job and I I'm grateful for your leadership, so thank you.
Thank you. It's been a great learning experience for me for sure. And one of the things that I love the most about this is the fact that it's so inclusive. And we have heard from all, I mean, like if just looking at the data numbers alone. And that there's no response bias. So that was like all types of students, all types of community members. So I'm proud about that piece, but thank you.
I just had something really quick, I just wanted to first of all, thank you for the presentation, I thought this was all really, really excellent. And I really like the emphasis on teaching soft skills, I think that's very much overlooked. And one thing that I wanted to to mention, and I don't know if there was just a laundry list of different soft skills that you've been teaching. But one that I thought of, that I've always thought of is financial management. And I think it used to be kind of taught in like home economics in a bygone era. But now, you know, just personal financial management. And the one thing I'm thinking about is the biggest financial decision that I've made in my life so far, which was going to college. And a lot of students just having that calculation of the loans, all the scholarships and all just that complicated financial decision. What the loan payments are gonna look like afterwards, how to manage all that. I just think those are incredible skills. And I've talked, there's been some student reps in the past that I've had very brief conversations about this with. But I I think that would be really great to to think about, including if you haven't already. But with that said, thanks so much for the presentation and and best of luck, this is all great.
Yeah, thank you. I didn't know you're right. So one of the things that came up over and over again is that our teachers are teaching a specific skill. So they'll teach close reading, they'll teach critical thinking, they'll teach math in the math room, you know. And they see all of, all three of those skills as transferable skills. But what we're hearing from our students, so over almost two thousand students, reporting that they don't see that as a transferable skill. They want the actual document sitting in front of them in a safe space with someone that they trust and working through that document. So yes, I think financial literacy is like a a term that we're all like using. But it's it's really financial dignity, they want the confidence to go in, know what they're reading, be confident about how they're answering the questions. And they need practice in a safe, supportive place before they do that in a high stakes environment.
I think that's a really great way to put it, the practice, because once the stakes are in line, if you make a mistake, I I like that a lot. Thank you, I appreciate that.
So Jen highlighted this for you guys, but next Wednesday is, it's a virtual student event that we're hosting. For all students in North Central Mass, whether you're in public school, private school or homeschool, grades two through twelve. And when I say we, it's a collaboration of many, many youth-serving organizations. So it's the college and our various grant programs, it's MOC, Luck, Pathways for Change, you name it. It's all these different organizations that typically would be in schools, working with students, and they just haven't been able to do that as much. And so students haven't been able to benefit from their knowledge and their support as much. So it's a it's an opportunity for them to connect with students, but it's also a laboratory in a sense. And a way for us to test out and give students exactly what they asked for with this research. So there's financial literacy sessions, there's exploring different pathways like fire science and veterinary tech and auto tech. And just other wellness information. So we're really excited about that and I'm grateful for all of our many community partners who are contributing for that.
It's Sally.
Thank you. So this is really fascinating because the social emotional classroom. This is that we've had for, I'm gonna say seven or eight years, you know, where it's really been front and center. Is is really reflected in what the students are telling us back, which is that teachers and friends who care about me. You know, really being their top ranking concern in the high school that is being met. And I found that really, I found that really consoling, you know, especially that they could say this after a year of COVID. And the, you know, what what everyone's gone through. And I just want to say thanks for, you know, a psychologically complex and really deep dive. Into how how our students are gonna succeed. And for them to tell tell us, because we've, we're, you know, we're trying to serve, you know, our students in every possible way. But for them to have the experience of of teachers and friends that care about them, sets them up for life in a way that no class ever will. So that was really great to see, thank you.
Thank you all so much for allowing us to to come to the meeting and present. I know that you have, I think, like three more things on your agenda, but we really appreciate it. So the the forum is in the chat, if if you could provide feedback, that would be truly appreciated.
Jen, I think just before you log off, the cabinet met with Cory Yang, the executive director of United Way. And financial literacy is one of their top goals in the community and for families and for students. So it's great to see that we're really leading on this and trying to get our students. Really, the real, they are real-life skills that are so important. I know Cory spoke a lot about credit scores when he was with us, about, you know, families and how that can be a barrier. A major barrier in some people's lives. So again, we're all trying to, all about trying to remove barriers. And financial literacy is is a barrier for for many students. And the more we can do to educate them now, the better. So thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, so returning to the agenda. Next up, we have Dave Semenza, Director of our Nutrition Services from Sodexo. So Dave, the screen is yours.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, everybody. I do have a, wanted to give you all just a brief update. Full-time, full-time return to school happening today. Sort of a update as to the direction of the meal programs for the rest of this year. Just so, just to keep everyone in the loop. So with full-time return today, we are shifting our focus. We're leveraging our resources a little bit better with students back in school full-time. We've made some changes, consolidated some of our programs in an effort to, again, maximize our resources. And ensure the nutrition, the nutritional needs of all the students within the Fitchburg schools, whether in person or remote. As well as anyone eighteen and under in the community are still being met. So with a return to school full-time, we are providing meals for consumption in the schools again as of today. Overall, a great first day, couple minor bumps as to be expected, but we've already got solutions in place for those going forward. Meals are being provided grab and go from the lunch lines with. Where the students then take to their designated seating locations where appropriate spacing is taking place. The the name of the game for us is ensuring rapid line movement. Longer students sort of linger in line, the more they're gonna sort of bunch up. And the goal is to keep the line moving and far apart. So we've made some, some of the things we're doing is we're pre-pre-selecting the students' side dishes. So they're picking their main item and we just pre-select the dishes, side dishes for them. You know, some of our more popular things like mandarin oranges and apple slices, things like that. There is no requirement for a pin or lunch number entry with the waivers we're operating under, so that certainly speeds up the line. Meals are packed for easy transportation to the eating location. And we are, we do have multiple serving lines to minimize any line lengths. You know, not not just the standard set lines that we have, but you know, we're setting up tables with temporary serving lines. All in an effort to ensure lines go as quickly as possible, so students aren't lingering in line. And all meals still continue to be at no cost. Monday through Friday, we are providing breakfast at the conclusion of the day to take home with the intention of consumption for the next morning. This this solves any concerns over problems with eating in school in the morning. So again, the breakfasts are provided conclusion of the day for students to take home to eat the next morning. Also, Monday through Thursday, we are able to provide for any student that wants it, an additional snack and dinner to take home. We're able to do this at no cost due to waivers associated with our virtual after-school program. And again, these meals are also provided at no cost. The remote learners as well as anyone else eighteen or under, we are still able to provide those meals operating under some. Adjusted summer food service rules that we've been operating since the start of the pandemic. Again, in an effort to leverage our resources and and focus on the large number of students back in person. We did consolidate some of our meal pickup sites. We took geography into location as well as, you know, popularity of the sites. You know, we maintained upwards of twelve to thirteen pickup sites. Some of those sites only had two or three people coming each day. But in in my opinion, it was, they needed it, they needed the food and there was no reason for us to close, to close those sites. Now it's the person and needing the resources or 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 redistributing the resources to maximize meal services. We did consolidate down to some of our more popular sites or or more well-attended sites, Rangel Elementary, McKay Arts Academy, Memorial Middle School. And two bus stops. The sites we did close, families were given. The additional options of where they could pick up meals if they were remote or kids not in school. As well as families did have the option where we could make arrangements for delivery. We are still providing home delivery as needed for hardship cases and we'll continue to do that for as long as we can. Again, all these programs still, enrollment in Fitchburg schools and residency in Fitchburg schools is not required. Simply eighteen or under and all meals are at no cost. I did want to put up a map, I apologize it's small, but I wanted to make sure, you know, the the different geographical locations of our meal pickup sites. Again, these are some of our highest participation sites throughout the pandemic meal service we've been doing. So it makes sense to keep them. Because we we still have the ability and folks still need them and we're happy to continue to provide them for as long as we're able to. One other update on our weekly meal bag program, we've rebranded it as our meal bags. One of the reasons for that, again, to leverage resources and the best way to get meals in kids' hands. For, since the start of the pandemic, Friday afternoons, we've been providing additional weekend meals. Pickup sites, once hybrid started for those kids, you know, in school, because we were providing the lunches at the end of the day, so we had the infrastructure in place. Again, just to be able to leverage what we had the best, we've rebranded our week, our weekly meal bags to meal bags. So families can easily preorder nutrition from our landing page on the Fitchburg Schools website. For pickup at Crocker and Memorial, meal bags that contain multiple breakfast and lunch meals. So again, remote learners, families have this option to pick up extra meals for the weekends. And these are available between, right now, between two and four, but we will be adjusting some of those times for next week. But we'll be advertising that as well. Again, just another option to. uh, for next week, but we'll be advertising that as well. Again, just another option to allow uh, families uh, access to no-cost meals even for their kids outside of school hours uh, seven days a week. And we will be doing something like this during the April vacation week where uh, families will be able to preorder uh, information on that coming soon. But one day during the break, my staff will be in uh, distributing uh, meal bags for anyone who uh, who wishes to pick one up. Over February break, we distributed about five hundred bags. Um, which is great. And we, we consistently hand out about three hundred or so bags every uh, every, every Thursday uh, between Crocker and uh, Memorial. Uh, from our landing, the preorder for that, this is our landing page right from the Nutrition Services section on the Pittsburgh Schools website. Click here to order your remote meal bags and it's a super simple order form. We ask for an email address so we can send confirmations and pickup instructions and you select the number of bags. Just a reminder of our safety protocols, all meals and meal programs follow proper safety guidelines. Our kitchen service areas and eating areas are cleaned and directed regularly. PPE, proper social distancing is practiced by all meal service staff and all of the meal service models that we're, that we've come up with are all being done to ensure the safest possible meal service as well as the um, quickest possible meal service without sacrificing any um, service quality in my opinion, because that's just as important. Uh, but we understand we, we need to get these kids through the line quickly. So uh, very successful first day doing that today and looking forward. The, the looks on the lunch lady's faces today, we've seen kids in a lunch line again was just um, you know, fourteen months in the making and it was, uh, thirteen months in the making. It was just, you know, great to see. That's what, that's what me and my staff live for. So uh, and reminders about following the uh, Pittsburgh Public Schools, different social media pages for any and all updates um, for, for our meal programs. Uh, I work with Chad Garner and we update these regularly as we adjust and change and uh, make sure we're, we're reaching as many people as we can. And that's it.
Thank you, Dave. Thanks to Sadekso and all your staff. I know how hard they work, doing a great job throughout this entire uh, this entire ordeal. So thanks so much. Appreciate it. City appreciates it.
And I, I think Dave, uh, is over three quarters of a million meals served?
Yes, uh, last week or towards the end of March, we hit three quarters of a million meals since the start of the pandemic provided. That's a, that's a pretty staggering number. So.
Yep. Thank you. It's a, it's a heroic effort uh, by the Nutrition Services team at all our schools. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on, uh, we have a few updates from Eva Kelly um, regarding enrollment fair, uh, coming up, Pittsburgh Families First update and adult ESL classes and lastly, access testing. So Eva?
Okay, I'm gonna go really quick.
You have no presentation, so this is just.
Yeah, it's really quick.
Direct, direct the committee.
All right. So we have um, an enrollment fair coming up, um, one this Thursday from four to six at the central office and one this Saturday, ten to two, uh, really trying to find those kids that never enrolled in kindergarten and anyone looking to enroll for the fall. Uh, we'll be giving out free empanadas and ice cream, backpacks. That's right. That's right, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for holding up the sign. We're so excited. So if you guys want an empanada, you can come by and just say hi to everyone. Thank you for the visuals. Very good, very good. We have a bunch of community agencies joining us. They'll be spaced out on tables um, outside and handing out information. New View Communities will be there, Central Family Resource Center, Mock Head Start, Early Childhood Programs, um, the Pittsburgh Art Museum, the YMCA, uh, and um, CHC, Growing Places and Healthy Families of Northwestern. So please come by. It's gonna be a great time. Uh, real quick update on Pittsburgh Families First, upcoming event actually also on Saturday starting at eight thirty, right at the Pittsburgh Art Museum on Elm Street entrance. They'll be giving away um, additional um, uh, gift cards to Market Basket and art supplies for students. And that's a collaboration between the North of Maine Project, the Pittsburgh Art Museum and their Cathedral Grant Fund. That's right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very good, very good. And Inform Pittsburgh uh, Organization. That's ten thirty, I mean, eight thirty to ten thirty on Saturday. So you could go there and then you could come to the enrollment fair. Uh, I wanted to let everyone know about our ESL, adult ESL classes. We have about forty parents signed up, taking adult ESL classes with two different instructors. Uh, the classes are twice a week for two hours. Each instructor has one class. We're gonna run it for eight weeks and see if the interest is still there. We'll continue to run that and we're using Intercom BOA as our curriculum for that. And finally, access testing. We're about eighty percent through access testing already. We have all the way up until May twentieth to finish, but the schools have been really pushing and trying to get those kids in now that they're back in school, finishing up um, the students we have missed. That's it. How, how quick was that?
Very good.
Any questions?
You're, you're my heroine.
Yeah. All right, I'm done. I'm done, Bob.
Nice to be done. Yeah.
Hey, any, any, any questions for Eva? Eva went through that in record time. Uh, there was a lot of information. Um, if not, we will uh, proceed and uh, Jim, go ahead.
Just quickly, um, Jared Bowen of WGBH Radio and TV did a nice piece on Families First in Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Art Museum. And I believe you may have been interviewed, Bob, for the segment that was on the radio. But it was a nice, nice piece about what we're doing in Pittsburgh, working with the community. So thank you, Eva, for all you do.
Yeah.
And everybody else.
Okay, um, I get to bring the superintendent's report to closure uh, with an update on our recruiting efforts here. So now I get to share my screen. So uh, bear with me for one minute. Okay. Did everybody see that?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Great. Thank you. So really, um, I wanna present to the school committee and, and school community at large an update of where we're at. This really involves some reflection um, and research and uh, on behalf of the school district, uh, Adam Runda um, will be helping out in tonight's presentation as he and also Curry Fabbali, our interim uh, Human Resources Director, contributed to this as well. Um, this is really kind of a summary of where we're, where we've been, where we're at and some of the challenges on the road ahead. Uh, and I just wanna be very clear upfront that Pittsburgh is not alone in uh, I guess I'll call it our current situation and our challenges. And um, this is something that is, you know, a process and our effort will be constantly improved here. So uh, having said that as a caveat, I'll uh, get to the slide deck. So really, one of the things that, as we're doing a lot of presentations and internally, we always ask ourselves, why are we doing this? And the reason is, and I think it's important for me to read, and I'm not going to read every slide tonight. But we believe deeply in the potential of every student to succeed and work tirelessly each day to create an anti-racist school environment that is built around high expectations, inclusive and welcoming culture, an exception of ex, expectation of excellence for all. Pittsburgh's goal is to increase personal growth, both academic and social emotional, to obtain the highest level of achievement for every student. And just before I go on any further, um, we spent a lot of time as a district and a couple of our schools working with Focus Schools, uh, the group that made a presentation to you last May in terms of uh, our goal and theory of action. And also, we've been um, working with the Diversity Belonging Inclusion Equity Consultant, uh, Dig Deep for Equity, uh, Dr. Darnisa Monte Jackson. So this really blends and brings together the why. Um, and one of the things that came up from the inclusivity appraisal, uh, not just in Pittsburgh, but in Massachusetts, which is probably the third least diverse state in terms of its uh, teaching staff, is we need to do our best efforts to diversify our education staff to better reflect the students that are in front of us. Um, this is a major initiative of Commissioner Riley and uh, at the conclusion of the uh, presentation tonight, I'll talk about what has been presented to the Massachusetts Legislature as a, as a proposed uh, act. So let, let's start at the big picture. What's happening nationally? Um, half the K through twelve population is non-white, while only twenty percent of teachers are non-white. Eleven percent of white college graduates become teachers compared to only nine percent of black and Hispanic college graduates. Coupled with racial gaps in college graduation, these gaps in teacher entry resulted in white adults becoming teachers at two to three times the rate as black adults and Hispanic adults. And the, and as we'll talk about some more, the pipeline for students of color to become teachers is not, is not currently working. Uh, and students of color who complete their teacher training program face a barrier in the MAP, the MTLS, which is the Mass, Massachusetts Teachers uh, licensure test. So again, at a high level, and these are national demand pictures, but if you look at the timeline uh, at the bottom uh, which shows in the two lines above, the dotted line is estimated demand and the uh, I guess dark blue or gray solid line is estimated supply. We, we and other districts are seeing a gap in terms of the supply of teachers in a variety of fields and the demands, demand for those teachers. What's driving this? There are four reasons. Um, decline in teacher preparation enrollments. Um, this, these four points, I should just be clear on this next bullet, was prepared prior to the pandemic. Uh, district efforts to return to pre uh, recession pupil teacher ratios, uh, increasing student enrollment and high teacher attrition. Uh, the labor market should respond to the availability of jobs, so we can expect some increase in supply. But the extent of the increase and its distribution across subjects, fields and locations are likely to be uneven. Uh, then below is a quote that I uh, cut and paste from the New York Times article that I shared with the, the school committee as kind of a collateral or pre-reading uh, prior to tonight's um, meeting. And you can see that, you know, nineteen percent of undergraduate level, eleven percent of graduate level teaching programs saw a significant drop in enrollment this year. And Teach for America, uh, which recruits college graduates to teach in low-income schools across the coun, country, has received fewer applicants. Um, Dr. Runda will talk a little bit more about the conversation we recently had with Teach for America and what they're seeing locally in terms of teachers uh, or graduates who are going in to Teach for America. We're gonna go back in time here on this slide, back to the inclusivity appraisal that Dr. Akuma Wadiki presented to, to the school committee last year. And the BIPOC, Black Indigenous and uh, People of Color. And when we look at students um, versus teachers, and these are uh, Pittsburgh, uh, this is Pittsburgh data. We can see the uh, the difference, or they call it the, remove my, the, the gap uh, between teachers and students in Pittsburgh is sixty point four percent um, on the teacher and student demographics. And again, the, the biggest differences are primarily in the uh, Latinx, uh, the African-American, Black and multiracial. Okay, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Runda.
So we're, we're quickly gonna talk about what research says districts need to do in order to attract diverse candidates. And then we'll go over some, some concrete steps that we're already taking. Um, so the first, uh, and this is really for everybody, right, is to create a competitive and equitable compensation package um, that allows teachers to live in the community where they teach. Um, enhance the supply of qualified teachers um, in high-risk fields and locations. You can do this through um, targeted grants and other programs. We actually did this in Pittsburgh with a, an ESL program that we ran with Pittsburgh State a few years back. Um, we need to find ways to um, keep uh, qualified and diverse teachers when we hire them. We often uh, find that uh, we, when we do hire um, diverse candidates, that they don't stay with us very long. Um, so we need to find ways to make them feel like they belong and are part of the community. And then just developing a, a national teacher supply market, um, also keeping teachers in places uh, where they need it over, over the course of their career. So we're, we, we don't want people to jump from one place to another. I think if you look at the people presented to you tonight, there's a lot of people who have worked in Pittsburgh for a long time. If, and because seventy percent of our students are people of color, um, we're hoping that they will choose to come back to us, right, when, uh, when they're done college and stay with us for a long time. Next slide. So some big first steps, there's some housekeeping that we need to do uh, within the school district. Um, so part of that is creating a culture of belonging um, so that the students that we serve feel like they belong in the community, in the school district, and we're giving them a positive experience. They're much more likely to come back and stay with us as teachers. We need uh, district-wide cultural proficiency training. Um, we are looking at the Code of Character Support and Conduct, um, co-teaching inclusion, which is a uh, already a priority that's being worked on. Um, and we're seeking opportunities to work with consultants that are expert um, in diverse recruit, uh, recruitment and attainment. Next slide. So we're really gonna transition from a passive approach to recruiting to an active. Um, in the past, really what we did is rely on school spring and just waited to see who applied. Um, that's not enough. So we need to actively communicate to our, to candidates of color and all of our candidates that we want them to work in Pittsburgh Public Schools. One of the things that we started almost immediately is using handshake.com. Handshake is almost like a Facebook for recruiting. Um, our HR is able to log on and it has lists of colleges throughout the country who use this. And you can connect with them just like you're connecting with a friend on Facebook. Uh, and when they accept you, uh, jobs that we have posted will, will be shared with the students um, in their universities or, or colleges. So we are already connected with almost all New England or Northeast colleges. We are connected with uh, ma, many, if not all of the historically black universities um, in other uh, universities that serve high populations of Latinx students. Um, we are posting our jobs on a website called NemNet and this is um, uh, specifically uh, for New England and it's specifically for diverse candidates. We're also starting to use a service called SPETX, which is almost like a headhunter. They will go out and find us candidates for special education jobs, uh, school psychologists, teachers, um, speech and language pathologists. Um, and there, there's a small fee. However, it is much less, the, the small fee, the fee is much less than what we pay to contract those jobs out privately now. So uh, this is a, uh, seems like it's gonna be a great resource. We need to start participating in job fairs. Um, we will start at Pittsburgh State University on the eighteenth and but we did one on the eighteenth and we'll be doing one uh, this April uh, twenty-first. Um, there's also one coming at BU uh, that I know that uh, we are signed up for. Um, and we are also looking to partner and starting to partner with national organizations for diverse candidates. So one of the things that we need to do is um, have a better relationship with some of our local colleges. Um, the formatting of this is a bit off when it um, it got switched to a PowerPoint. But this is uh, some of our local colleges and their score for how they um, how diverse their teacher preparation programs are. Now, the interesting thing is UMass Boston is the only A-plus. Um, we have a pre uh, existing relationship with Boston College. Um, theirs is a B. Um, and we have a pre-existing relationship with the state and theirs is a C. Now I know when you see this- Now, I know when you see this, and it might be disappointing to see that Worcester State, Pittsburgh State and UMass Amherst have Cs. However, these were some of the higher scores, and it, and it's why we're targeting them. So some of the initiatives that, um, we're going to take that are gonna be really active is we are currently working on creating a future teacher fellowship. Um, so this is where we can identify these candidates when they're juniors and seniors uh, in college right now. This could possibly go down to high school. Uh, we want them to become part of the community before they graduate. We want to, uh, find these great candidates and give them preferential placement for, um, student teaching and practicals, so we know that they're with good teacher mentors. We want to offer them opportunities, uh, for, for after-school summer programs, uh, an opportunity to participate in our district-wide PD. Um, this is, this is all a way to get them to feel comfortable and want to stay in Pittsburgh and not find a job somewhere else. Um, we are thinking about creating, uh, a leadership residency program. There are organizations out there such as Leadership Academy, who we do have a relationship with, uh, out of Boston College, who will actu- actually send us candidates for leadership positions that are certified and will go through a fellowship, um, with, uh, some really great leadership training. We had a conversation with Teach for America, and we're gonna have another conversation this fall to see if we can get them to expand their network out to Central Mass. We are one of the only gateway cities that they're not working with. Um, we are one of the smaller, uh, gateway cities, and, and that's really why they're not out here yet. But again, Teach for America will identify, uh, these candidates for a two-year commitment. Not only that, they will support them and train them with intense, uh, high-quality training. Um, and then the next is, is once we have these candidates in-house, we have to keep them. We have to get them to, to stay in the job. So we need to have organizations with in Pittsburgh Public Schools that can mentor and train and help, uh, that community. Um, one of the things that we are doing is, um, we have a leadership pipeline grant through the Bar Foundation with other North Central Mass partners, the Gardner, Leamester and Winchton. It's actually the same partners, um, that work with Portrait of Graduate, so that we can create a pipeline, so there's more opportunity with in Pittsburgh Public Schools and some of these, all of our, which is also going to need to, uh, look somewhere else for opportunity.
Hey, Adam, I, I just wanted to add on the creation of the Future Teacher Fellowship. Currently at Pittsburgh High School through the Education Pathway, uh, Program with, uh, Pittsburgh State University. Uh, we already have, uh, a program in place where if someone is interested in pursuing, um, teaching career, that they can get, get twelve credits, uh, twelve college credits while, uh, completing their senior year. And Jeremy and myself are also working with, um, Pittsburgh State to try to, um, put together a program that's more formal whereby, uh, education majors could work for the school district in the summer. And we're also looking at about, booking at some type of, uh, scholarship assistance in their junior and senior years. Um, cause it's one thing to get into, uh, a college or university. Um, what a lot of colleges are, are realizing partly because of the economics, uh, high cost of college is keeping students, uh, in college, the retention factor, factor. So we're trying to, uh, put together a plan that helps address that.
No, the, the other thing that that plan will do is we do lose, not, not just Pittsburgh, but the field, the education field loses teachers in the first couple of years. And part of that is because they're really not prepared to step into a classroom when they graduate. So programs like this that will expose them to actual classrooms and teaching, um, will help them feel more prepared and be ready to what, you know, when they step in front of that room and have twenty-five faces looking at them, looking for guidance.
So as, uh, we began the presentation tonight, really, there's a couple shortages. Uh, one, uh, for Pittsburgh and many districts, uh, like Pittsburgh. Um, there, there's an imbalance between our, uh, students' demographics and our staff demographics. Um, and Commissioner Riley is trying to be creative in terms of, uh, creating some flexibility and looking at, uh, structural barriers. Uh, MTELS was mentioned earlier. That was something that, um, received some input before the pandemic happened. Um, there's no news, uh, to update on that front. But what I wanted to close, uh, my portion or our portion of the conversation tonight and presentation is there has been, uh, legislation proposed in Massachusetts to address the need to, uh, have teachers mo- look more like the students that are in our classrooms. So, um, I'm not going to, again, read through each and every one of them, but the al-, you know, just in summary, an alternative certification. Again, pathways for alternification up to the MTEL by twenty twenty-four. Um, we actually cut this presentation in half in terms of the amount of data that we wanted to present. Um, but it's, you know, pro- proven, and it's a fact that, uh, many, uh, MTEL, uh, applicants of color, uh, do not pass at, um, rates much, much higher than, than they should, or that, that are, that they are passing. Um, you know, again, pandemic interrupted, uh, a little bit of what was happening uh, on the, uh, education diversity, um, pipeline, um, at the urban superintendents before the pandemic. Uh, the DESI was taking in public comment from the, uh, urban superintendents about how to make it more flexible. Um, so stay tuned for some more, um, information on that. Um, again, hiring and promotional practices, mandated diversity and inclusion training. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, the district is undergoing, uh, some diversity equity logging inclusion tr- or equity training with, uh, Darnes Amonte Jackson. Um, that's something that we will be doing, uh, continuing and, uh, probably expanding a little bit. Um, then, you know, four, five and six, um, for the elevated voices of diverse educators. Uh, we need to look at, uh, creating councils or committees within, in the school district. Uh, again, the, as part of the program that we signed up for with, uh, Big Deep for Equity, Dr. Darnes Amonte Jackson at some point, uh, she will be making a presentation to the school committee. This is, this would be above and beyond the inclusivity appraisal, which was presented last year. Uh, we will be continuing our training with district leaders and all staff, uh, over the co- coming year, along with the anti-bias training, um, you know, for screening committees, and that's something that we'll be putting together um, in the near future. Any comments, questions?
Two, two quick thoughts. Um, one, well, first of all, this is all great, and I, I appreciate the premise of all this, that this is a national issue. There's tons of school committees in Massachusetts that have gotten this exact same presentation in one way or another. Um, but o- one thing that I thought was, have we, in a systematic way, approached the educators of color that we have in the district and asked them what their thoughts are of how to retain and recruit other educators of color? Is that something we've done?
Uh, we haven't done that yet.
Okay.
I think this, this is really, tonight's presentation is, um, I'll say the first step in our, our journey here. Um, as I mentioned at, at the beginning, we've been doing a lot of research into, um, what, you know, what practices are out there. Uh, some of the things that we presented tonight, including the handshake, although we were signed on, um, as, uh, Dr. Renda called it like Facebook, uh, it was like we never activated our account. So, uh, we activated our account. We're on the radar now of, uh, sixty-eight institutions. Um, again, that's just like saying I have sixty-eight friends on Facebook. Um, some of them you're more friendly with than others, uh, and have deeper relationships than others. Um, this is really a, I'll say, a restart of, um, you know, move, transitioning from passive to active. Um, there's, you know, well, to use a baseball analogy, um, you know, it's like opening day, uh, twenty twenty-one. Um, and we're, I guess we're more than three games into the season here. Uh, if I can just use the Red Sox as a benchmark, um, we have a lot, a lot more work to do. So we'll be doing that in the coming months and years, and this is something that we're just going to be building on.
I think it's part of the planning can be, um, really just the, the challenging of the societal kind of stereotype of teaching. It would be helpful because, I mean, I think if you're a young, talented, black indigenous person of color, you're getting a lot of messages about what are the successful fields. I mean, this is any kid now, right? But I think especially if you are, um, you know, a, a traditionally or come from a, um, group that maybe traditionally has been left out of other fields of study, right? Like, or has not made gains. And so there's pressure to become the first CEO of this, or the next, um, you know, like neurosurgeon and, and, and I think that, like, societally, there's just this, I mean, people can give lip service, like, they think teachers are great and everything, but there's such a stigma to teaching that it's sort of like the George Bernard Shaw, you know, those who can do, those who can't teach. And I think that there's been this constant, like, I don't know, it's like this nasty little thing that hangs around ed- education. And I feel like kids probably pick that up, right? Like, it's, I know with the seniors that I teach, it's very traditionally, like, it's still those traditional kids who tend to be white, who tend to think, I wanna be an elementary school teacher, right? I don't even hear a lot of kids say they wanna be high school teacher, right? I, I think they know they wanna be an elementary school teacher. And I think that, you know, like, they're getting these messages that there are much more challenging, much more important fields. And I don't really know, I think I remember some, uh, one thing that Jeremy Roach said years ago, something like the most important job is a teacher, right? Like, people, I do believe that. I mean, I do the job. But I think a lot of people don't believe that. So in whatever messaging we're giving to these, to, to the leadership academies, I mean, we need people to believe they're gonna change the world, right? Like, we need people to believe that they're doing a job that is so significant. And I just don't feel like that message gets to kids. I remember years ago, there was, um, like, a program that, this is in this district, a program that was run by somebody who's long retired. And I remember we were at a school committee meeting and we were going through the jobs that alumni held. And there was really this, like, almost dismissing anybody who was in education or anybody who was in, um, maybe like, uh, uh, home maker, right? Like, you wanted to be those jobs that were the, you know, top STEM-related kind of fields. I don't know if I'm making any sense, but I feel like there is this message that goes on. So I would love to see, like, whatever recruitment, I love the plan. I think it's great that you guys are reaching out to all these different places. But I really think we've gotta change the way we talk about teaching to kids. And what it does.
I agree with you, um, completely. I think teachers have rushed it this past year in the pandemic. And they, and they're not, they, they get a pretty bad rap, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's tough, but, so just piggyback on your point, I think the best way to recruit teachers and change that language is to give our current students a really positive school experience.
Yep.
Because if, if they have that, they're gonna wanna come back. And if we do that, with seventy percent of our population being students of color, we're, we're gonna get those students to come back. And, you know, the way that you do that, if, if you give them a positive experience, use curriculum materials that represent who they are. Um, and along with, you know, sports and the arts. I mean, we're, we're really, we're really starting to connect all of these dots. Um, because if you look at the teachers that are in Pittsburgh now, this is a estimate here, I'm thinking about seventy percent either grew up in Pittsburgh or some community. But we need, we need that to happen in the next twenty years, right? We need the students that, that are with us now to come back and teach and, and be here for, for twenty years. And, and hopefully, if that happens, it'll be a more representative, um, staff.
Yeah, I, I think, um, Gene, you know, combination of what you said and, and what Adam just said. Um, and this is not just in Pittsburgh, this is, you know, across the state and across the country. Um, our students need to feel like they're blo- they belong and are welcome, much like you were alluding to earlier in tonight's meeting. Um, that's key. Uh, the Commissioner of Riley and Commissioner Santiago of Higher Education, uh, I've heard this story now twice. They have gone to the state colleges. They have talked to students, uh, about going into teaching. Um, many did not have a good experience in K-12. Um, and, and I guess to your point, Gene, um, you know, teach, the teaching profession compet- uh, competes against other sectors. Um, many which can pay, you know, higher salaries out of the gate, right? And if you're borrowing a lot of money to go to school, um, you know, as we're talking about financial literacy, you know, people are making a choice. Um, so there, there's a lot of factors, and I don't know if there's a simple answer. Um, but I think it's, it's something that we recognize, uh, where we're at. Uh, we're up for the challenge and we're up, you know, for taking steps forward and, and, and putting in best practices. You know, we can't be passive. Okay, clearly, as we look, you know, saw from the supply and demand, we have to be active. Uh, we have to let people know who aren't familiar with Pittsburgh, what's great about Pittsburgh, how the city's undergoing a renaissance. Uh, you know, we have great institutions like the Pittsburgh Art Museum. We're close to recreational areas like Mount Waukesha. You know, we're an hour away from Boston. Uh, housing prices out here are much more affordable than they are within four ninety-five. So there's, there's a lot of pluses to being in Pittsburgh. Um, we have to convince some people who may not be as familiar with Pittsburgh to come here. Um, and, you know, I think as we, you know, have future meetings with regards to budget and the Student Opportunity Act, um, and, you know, this ESR meeting where we're all looking for mental health professionals to, um, to help our students. It's, um, it's literally a, and not necessarily an arms race, but using that as a metaphor, we're, we'll be competing against every district for, for talent. And, and, and that pool, um, recent trends indicate that it is not growing, uh, but the demand is. Pete, were you gonna say something?
Oh, oh, I, I, a little off.
I had two quick thoughts. Um, one, one thought I had was that I didn't hear mentioned, but that doesn't mean it's not being considered, is paraprofessionals. Do we know, I, I couldn't find online, cause I know there's a lot of demographics from teaching and students that are online. I couldn't find for paraprofessionals, um, while you were talking, but for our paraprofessionals of color, if we can create some kind of a, uh, a program to have them become accredited teachers, if that's what they wanna do, or create a pipeline of paraprofessionals to teachers, um, I think that would be creative and potentially work. Um, a- and just a last thought was, do we wanna set a goal? I know you said you're just in the beginning stages of this, um, but, you know, as a district, as a committee, it's one thing to say, we wanna do better. Um, and I think, like you said, this is, a lot of districts are saying we wanna do better. But what does that look like and what's our actual end goal? I think that's something to consider. Right now, we're at ten percent. You know, if we want it to be by two thousand twenty-five, we'll be at twenty percent or what have you. I, I think that's something that should be in the conversation as well. And I'd just like, I think I'd like to see that, to have a real end goal of what, um, what we're shooting for here and what kind of timeline that looks like.
Um, but that's. Well, I, I mean, I'll, um, I guess just, you know, we're looking at all options. Uh, there are some districts that have some programs with paraprofessionals, uh, Worcester's one. Uh, we recently have, uh, received a copy of their, uh, their plan, which is, uh, very extensive. So we're, um, in the process of looking and learning and seeing what we can, what we can put together here in Pittsburgh. And, um, you know, having hard number goals are, can be a challenge because we have, if you don't achieve them. Uh, and I don't say that because, um, we're not, not up for go- the challenge, which we are. Um, and I think we, we, as I mentioned earlier, we're hitting the reset button. We have been too passive, so being, uh, I guess, very self-reflective here and, and looking at where we have been, where we're at, just what we've been. And, and looking at where we have been, where we're at, just what we've been able to accomplish in the last uh couple of months. I think is um almost a movement of light years uh of what we've done maybe over the last five years. So it's, it's something that, you know, in addition to, you know, kind of the handshake or the online approach. We're also talking with uh various institutions in person, leveraging personal uh professional educational networks. To get the word out more. So.
Hello?
Yep, go ahead, Rosemary.
The thought just occurred to me, uh piggybacking on the previous thoughts, which I think are, are creative. In other fields, and I'm thinking uh the, the various uh medical fields. There are positions offered to people uh that like to go around different parts of the country. And they might take a three-month position or something like this and, and then continue on or be offered to stay. And that might be exciting to have somebody coming in from uh various spots of the country to teach a course. For half a year or trimester or something like that, offer that type of a program, just a thought.
Yep. Right, Sally.
Oh, thanks. Sorry. Okay, um, so number two really interests me, which is the charge DSE part. Because DSE is a behemoth in terms of influence. In fact, without their support, we're, we're just nowhere on so many fronts. So is, this seems like the sort of thing that those of us on the school committee, and again, I do talk to other members of school committees. In gateway cities around the state. But they need to hear from us really vehemently about how we do this. We need their support and with, without this educator diversity data dashboard. We're, we're, you know, we're on our own, I guess, and it's great that we have the Worcester, Worcester's plan. And I know that, you know, Bob and the team, you guys are, are on top of the structure needed. But where is DSE on this issue? Um, Adam or Bob, if you could speak to that?
Well, I guess I'll start. Uh, I mean, the commissioner, this is one of his, I'll say, one of his top two initiatives. In terms of having a teacher workforce that looks like the students in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I think what DSE has to do, um, which is, you know, I don't know if it's exactly addressed here in the, this proposed legislation. Uh, and again, this is just proposed, so the, just to be clear, the House and Senate haven't even formally appointed their committees to begin reviewing any proposed legislation. So um, this is, you know, early stage, but this is something that. Will probably start making the rounds of Beacon Hill. You know, that said, Sally, I think DSE can look at itself in terms of its uh, what barriers they have. Whether it be MTL or accepting uh teacher licensure from other states reciprocity. They, they can help be part of the solution versus relying on three hundred fifty-one cities and towns. To come up with their own individual plans. They, they, they can be an accelerant uh in moving uh their goals forward. This, you know, so. Adam, do you want to add on to that or?
You know, I mean, I think the only thing I would say is we, we wouldn't be able to hire the New Hampshire. Vermont, Maine, Connecticut, or Rhode Island's Teacher of the Year. Because they wouldn't be licensed, we don't, we don't accept the license. All of those states take the Praxis and we have MTLs. If they simply allow Praxis as a, as a test, and Carrie and I talked about this earlier. The number of candidates that Massachusetts would have would drastically increase. So there, there's a lot of things um that the state needs to change and, and you know, and MTLs is one. A major one.
Okay, um, I'm gonna bookmark this for the next time I'm able to um, you know, stop by the office. With a mask and a cape, so thank you.
Okay, if there are uh no other questions, um, I'm gonna just continue along this uh slide deck. I have a couple of slides from Craig Schalfo, Director of Finance and Operations, to give an update um on budget. So here we go, Craig.
Thanks, Bob. Um, it just, um, this is our request that we have as an action item before the committee this evening about. Addressing the, the current uh paid-for substitute teachers. This was discussed at our last resource subcommittee meeting. So we are recommending that we have a sub increase for our daily subs, which are currently at seventy dollars. For most schools in seventy-five dollars for Pittsburgh High School. I jokingly said to Mr. Stevens during our meeting that I think in nineteen eighty-eight, when I was subbing, I was receiving sixty-five dollars. So um, you know, the adjustment is probably well overdue, not to date myself. But we're requesting the committee um, our recommendation to the committee is to adjust the daily rates. To ninety-five dollars for daily sub and to a hundred dollars for our permanent building subs. And our permanent building subs are those um folks that we hire full-time for us that are in our buildings every day. Know our kids the, the most and, and work in our classrooms. So that's um what we're requesting is an effective date for April twenty-sixth, pending your approval. And just, you know, this is not a sustainable model. Of, yep, thank you. Nope, go back.
Okay, started.
Yeah, there you go. So just, uh, you know, a couple of the, the reasons behind this, this is, you know, obviously, it's just not competitive. We're not competitive in the market to hire substitute teachers. Most surrounding communities are paying much higher than we are. And unfortunately, many times what we need to use is our paraprofessionals, so we have to sometimes pull them from their. Classroom responsibilities and have them sub for teachers at an increased rate of thirty-five dollars per day. So just doing some quick math, you know, overall, in, in, you know, the, the eighteen positions. I don't know if we've ever had full capacity in our permanent building subs, because it tends to be somewhat of a, of a revolving door. But if we were able to fulfill all of our positions at eighteen, it'd be approximately eighty-one thousand dollar increase per year. For those permanent building subs that, that play such a, play such a critical role for us. So that's an action item in front of the committee this evening. And then uh, just to piggyback.
Craig, you said, you said eighty-one thousand?
Yes, if you can go back to that slide. So that would be overall, and again, that's eighteen positions. It'd be about forty-five hundred dollars per position. So it'd take our permanent building subs um.
Why is there a reflection on this?
Of twelve.
Okay, yeah.
Twelve dollars per hour to roughly sixteen dollars per hour.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so Craig, I think just before we go to the uh, the budget summary slide. You know, given this past uh year dealing with the pandemic. Many districts are um struggling uh finding, recruiting, maintaining substitutes. So um, much as I said about the earlier presentation, uh many districts are in the same boat that we are with substitutes.
And, and again, just to piggyback a little bit on our conversation from our last resource subcommittee meeting. We hadn't received our indirects um costs from the city. Literally received them shortly after we adjourned our meeting last week. So as you can see, our employer retirement contributions increased over three hundred thousand dollars, which was a nine percent increase. In the um, the health insurance costs, which we had anticipated uh was a nine percent increase of six hundred thousand dollars. So totaling over nine hundred thousand dollars. And unfortunately, you know, that, that is right off of our chapter seventy money. And when we've talked with the committee about the three point one million dollars as our. Our chapter seventy, unfortunately, with those increased indirect costs of a, a little over a million dollars. That decreases our chapter seventy from three point one to a little over two million dollars. So I think that's an important point to make as we enter into this, you know, further into the budget season. And we'll continue to update the committee on any other changes. But, you know, tho- these were numbers that we had anticipated, um particularly the health increase in healthcare costs. And, and that's to the tune of, of close to a million dollars increase.
Okay, any, any questions for Mr. Schalfo? Okay, having none, um, I think. Craig, you have um. Just some donations here and grant update here?
I can bring it home with grants and donations. So we have two grants to accept. We have uh the ELT grant. For five hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars, seven hundred and twelve, and that was to the Long Joe Middle School. For um, programs to run between now and the end of the school year to support students. And also for summer school programming. And then the second one was the Open SIAID grant that we had received fifty-seven thousand fifty dollars. Um, and that is for our grade sixty-eight science uh curriculum at Memorial and Long Joe McCann. That's to support the implementation of this pilot program through the state. We also had uh one donation to accept, and that was for a thousand dollars from the Alliance Energy LLC. And that was to Pittsburgh High School in support of STEM initiatives. And we have a royalty check to accept. And that was for two hundred and sixty-six dollars seventy-one cents. And that, those have been received over the last couple of years. So that was the royalty versus a donation to be accepted.
Okay, and I think that uh covers it. Unless there are many, any questions for, for Craig. The chair can return to the action items, and I think just the last action item, I think that was tabled about the policy.
Yes. Craig, can you send me that budget page? The one you showed with myself and, and the auditor as well, would you please?
Yep, absolutely.
Tomorrow or now, or whatever you can, but tomorrow. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Superintendent. So are we, does the committee wish to bundle twenty-one dash fifty-four up through it, including? Well, no, twenty-one fifty-eight is tabled. So twenty-one fifty-four up to twenty-one fifty-seven.
Motion to bundle.
Second.
Excuse me.
Made and seconded to bundle. Uh, let's have a show of hands on this one, Ms. Greenlee's.
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, can you, I, I just so turned over so many pages. The one that I'm concerned about, I, I'm going to vote no on if, if it comes to a vote tonight. Would you let me know when that one?
Which one is that, Ms. Reynolds?
It's not an action item.
No, okay, all right, we're all set, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that. Right, we have more, that, that's subject to more discussion, okay. So, Ms. Greenlee's, if you would call the roll, please.
Yes, Mayor DiNatale, would you please um confirm this second on, I didn't hear it with the discussion going on?
Was it, was it Mr. Walsh? Seconded?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um, the roll call, Mayor DiNatale?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Cregan?
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
We are unanimous?
All right, that's a vote to bundle. Now we're taking that vote? That was a vote to bundle. Now we're taking the vote, bundling them. So, uh, please, Ms. Greenlee's, uh, call the roll again, please.
Are we going to keep the first and second for the approval as well?
First and second? I'm not sure, what?
We just bundled, but now we need to approve the items.
Make a motion to approve the bundle?
Right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Was that, uh, Mrs. Pierce? Yes, yes, thank you. Yes, roll call, um, Mayor DiNatale?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Cregan?
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
We are unanimous?
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, no need for executive session, correct?
Correct.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded adjourned by unanimous consent. We are adjourned, thank you.
Okay, thank you, good night.